All right, we got a motion for approval from Mr. Veen, second from Mr. Weber. Any other debate or questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Two point one carries unanimously, two point two.
Two point two, award bid for Project 8059 Columbia Road Reconstruction overpass to north of University Avenue.
Now, did this Mr. Grasser ask us to be postponed?
Yes.
Do we have the, there was, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Feen.
Mayor Bochensky members of City Council, there's an issue, this is a North Dakota Department of Transportation bid, so they review it first and make a recommendation. So, there's an issue with the lowest low bid of the T-ZAC Concrete Inc. They did quite a bit of work last summer and the summer before in Grand Forks, but there's an issue with their DVE, which is disadvantaged business enterprise. And so, they're looking to move forward with a recommendation on the second low bid, but there's not enough time to go through that. So, they've hit a snag, we're looking to still award the bid, but we, they're reviewing this, the next two low bidders.
So, does this one make sense to go to the next call or should we just move forward? I mean, if we like the first bid, does anybody have any issues with going April 5th or do you want to see this?
Well, I was gonna say the same thing. Is there a way we can make a recommendation now? If the DOT doesn't go with it, we could reconsider?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. So, I would just, yeah, we could talk about it on the 5th and then, yeah, do the second.
We'll bring this back on the April 5th City Council.
April 5th City Council?
Yeah, and if they're not ready, we can always punt a future meeting, and even if we have to go to a City Council meeting before the call.
It's only a week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, postpone to the 5th would be great, thank you.
All right, so we're looking for a motion for that.
One week, postpone.
Mr. Veen, motions, Mr. Kamami seconds. Any other debate? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Two point three.
Two point three, Beacon by Epic Development Demolition Agreement.
Again, Mayor Bochensky members of City Council, we talked a little bit about this at the community hall meeting last week. The developer would like to move forward with demolition, I understand, yet this week. And they want to make, ensure, they wanted a further assurance that they could incorporate the cost of demolition into the revenue bond that we intend to bring back. We intend to bring back a development agreement that will highlight all the particulars of the Beacon by Epic Development, and there's a lot of particulars. So, we anticipate that would get final approved in May, but in the meantime, they'd like to move forward with construction.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Feen?
Motion of approval.
Motion of approval from, was that Mr. Weigel? All right, Mr. Weigel, motions, and Mr. Weber, seconds. Any other debate? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Two point four, the reason that I imagine all these kids are here, they got a little extra ammo and the cuteness factor, so appreciate everyone showing up, getting behind this. But, Maureen, why don't you read it off?
Sure. Master plan for city land south of Alaris Center, master plan presentation and associated BMX Club license agreement.
Mr. Feen?
All right, Mayor Bochensky, we have a PowerPoint presentation that we earlier provided at the Alaris Center, so maybe you want to even dim the lights, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind. So, with me this evening are Sean Gaddy from A2S. We have Thomas, I'm gonna call you Tom, is that okay? Tom Wesley, and Mark Schell from Praxis. So, this has come up, first we got going with the land south of the Alaris Center, and how do we move forward? And really, the triggers were these kids right here, is that they wanted a temporary license or a lease to move forward the BMX track. Things, one thing led to another, and that's why we're here today. So, everyone should thank the BMX Club why we're here today. So, before we got into this, I know there's lots of interest in this particular land, whether it's children museums or turf fields or whatever else. And so, what we try to do is, this is city land, so it's a City Council decision. I further know there, you know, there's interest even among City Council members of how we're gonna move forward with this particular property. So, the team I've assembled with A2S and Sean Gaddy involved is I wanted to make sure that we were objectively looking at this from a detached point of view on behalf of the City of Grand Forks. And so, that was part of my advisement from Mr. Gossett. So, one of the things before we move forward with any of these uses, including the use tonight we're gonna talk about, is that we needed a master plan and a land use analysis so that we could demonstrate we did go through an objective process, looked at the site, and what we're proposing today to you, we can say is, really has been an objective process. So, really feeding off of what we did from, and also what we wanted to do is get to the market capture. How do we get to action? It was really some great information as we move forward, and we really wanted to get to action on that. How do we look at the various land that we have, including this site, and really find the best uses as we move forward? And then, what's come up recently, how do we take some of our stimulus funds and how do we look at areas where we could build upon our experiences and move forward? So, that's kind of really how we got here today. We were at the Alaris Center Commission last week, and they have generally endorsed, when you look at the land to the south, that it would be good for the Alaris Center. More details to come as we move forward. They have further endorsed ultimately this BMX, this license agreement, that it would be, they could live with that within their neighborhood, and would be value-added to that. So, we've done some work, and again, the BMX Club wanted to get going yet this year, and so we've compressed a lot of work in about a two-month period of time to get to where we are today. So, I'm glad that we're here, and we could have an up or down vote on moving forward. With that all being said, we're just moving forward with the land use part of this and trying to have a master plan concept. And if you look at trying to really create this experience park, there's probably some other economic, how much economic impact are we gonna drive to the site? We haven't gone to that end, but I'm still looking at just the land use part of this so we can move forward with this license agreement this evening. So, there's more steps to go, and even once you get through this land use, if you really look at some great examples throughout our country where they've created these experience parks, they've done a lot more, you know, looking at management structures, looking at economic impact, and how they can drive further investment in their community in these areas. So, more to come on those particular areas. With that, I'm gonna hand it off to Mark Schell, does this better than everyone else, but anyone else, if he could kind of really flesh out why we're doing, what we're doing here.
Thanks, Mr. Feen. Mayor Bochensky, members of Council, I'm Mark Schell with Praxis Strategy Group based in Grand Forks. So, looking at this, we're looking at both opportunities, what could we do, and gaps? What might be missing in Grand Forks here? And so, the overall strategy that we found is to focus on youth and young families, and how do we attract them, both locally but also visitors? And there's three reasons why. The first one is that we're seeing that there's more young families in this community compared to 10 years ago. The second one is that youth amenities are an opportunity to attract visitors. And then, the third is that we're seeing that events and amenities are helping drive customers to local businesses. And so, looking at this first one, young families living in the area since 2010, people in their 30s are up 21%, and that's double the national growth rate of people in their 30s. At the same time, kids under age 15 are up about 10%. And that age group has actually declined a little bit nationally. So, that, this region is bucking the trend there, just on basic demographics, people in their 30s, kids under 15. And then, working with the Buxton Company in the market capture study, they looked at 71 different customer types as part of that. Of that, you know, along with college students, of course, the other major category that really shown there, both in numbers and in over-concentration, was, again, young active families. And so, seeing that, there seems to be a market for that sort of thing locally with people that do live in the community. So, looking at attracting visitors, we know that about 75% of overnight visitors to this community live within 300 miles. 45% of those folks come from either the Twin Cities or Fargo. So, even through the pandemic, we think that might be an opportunity that, it's primarily car travel that's driving that, which would fit with some of these youth-focused tournaments, events, and attractions. And then, again, working with the Buxton Company, they looked at overnight visitors, and they identified 15 of those 71 customer types. Of those 15, 10 of them were young families. So, again, through that process, it was young families that really stuck out again. And then, this last point about driving business and economic impact. We found, looking through the pandemic, got access to data about foot traffic to businesses. In early 2020, before the pandemic happened, we saw huge spikes in hotels, in retail, in restaurants and bars on weekends and on nights where there was big events, namely the Kiss Concert that happened, we saw huge spikes to those types of businesses. We find that about 54% of the people, visitors that visit the Alaris Center, also shop on 32nd. And 60% of those folks also stay in hotels. Visitors that come downtown Grand Forks, 64% or almost two-thirds of them also shop on 32nd, and 41% of them stay in hotels. So, that's compared to, of overall visitors, it's only about 34%, right? So, 54% that go to Alaris, 64% that go to downtown, they tend to shop more. So, there's more return, it seems to me, from those visitors to business as opposed to your typical visitor. And then, finally, looking at, knowing that some of these attractions and events can attract visitors, Grand Forks is low in some of these key categories compared to the nation. We're pretty much average in sporting arenas, as we know, but we're about 45% below average in amusement recreation, and about 65% below average in things like museums and other attractions. So, again, all of this sort of adds up to the orientation of looking at this land and saying, let's look at a focus towards young families, both for the locals but also to draw more business to the community.
So, through the city's leadership, we've made one remarkable benefit right now. We have the Grand Forks Park District that's helping to lead organizing all these various groups at this point in time. So, all these groups have worked independently with one another, and working independently, you usually don't get as much done than if you work as a team. So, currently, right now, working behind the scenes, the Park District has captured all these groups that are really interested in, whether it's turf facilities or aquatic centers or other youth-type things, and they've gathered all these groups to say, hey, let's work together and let's actually get something done. That would be remarkable so that we can be a better benchmark community with our other competitive communities and get some of these things that we've told, we've been told we don't have in our community, and that's really setting us back as we move forward. So, just so you know, that's going on behind the scenes. So, they're engaging these groups, they're trying to quantify what their needs are and how they can work together as part of the greater good and how they can operate together. So, that's going ongoing, as, if you will, so they've done surveys, they're working, engaging groups. I would anticipate the Park District would be here at some point in the near future with some results, further results that you could engage in as part of that. So, that's been a big victory right there. Number two, I'm gonna say, really going off the strengths of the Beacon by Epic, and is how do we look at development throughout the City of Grand Forks? Not only just providing tax incentives so people can move forward, but how do we move forward with community amenities as part of mixed-use developments? And when I look at the Beacon by Epic, that was a classic case of having something we wanted in our downtown that would be a better and complimentary town square, and so we've done that in this case. So, really what we've looked at as part of, not only the Alaris Center that we're gonna focus on this evening just because it's city property, is that we're also focused on when we look at further developments, whether it's at the Columbia Mall or at the University of North Dakota or other locations, how can we integrate a great public use within that redevelopment strategy? So, just so you know, two groups in particular, we've talked recently with the University of North Dakota with the Park District, and we've spoken with the Columbia Mall and their developer on how we could mix this in. So, we're trying to create, not if we're gonna do this, but where should we do this? And maybe it's and, where can we do this? So, it doesn't have to be an or. So, we're trying not only within groups, within property owners, that we work together, and working together is better than trying to kill one another off. We usually get more done in that vein. So, that's really what we're working on behind the scenes. With that, I'd like to hand it off to Tom and Sean to kind of talk about this particular site as we move forward. And I'll make one more note, this, I say city land, but there is property, and I noted in my, in the staff report that is owned by Keith Danks Jr. We, the mayor has engaged them as part of the city administration, and we are doing, and currently moving forward in appraisal, just so we know what the value of that property is as we move forward, as part of that one last puzzle piece that's in this area. So, that way, Sean and Tom, thank you.
Thanks, Todd, good evening. So, as Todd mentioned, we are amongst all those groups that were just pointed out on one of the prior slides here, have started working, looking at the land that is south of the Alaris Center, and researching property owned, and as Todd mentioned, unowned by the city, getting a sense for its current configuration as well as potential configurations, given the handful of interests that have spoke up and said that if there were an opportunity, they would consider this location at the Alaris Center property as one of their potential fits. As Todd said, we're not necessarily saying it should go here, but we're looking at, for all of the interests that have expressed some, like I said, some interest in the property, really what do we have there and how could it potentially fit? So, looking at the property zoning and developing, which Tom will get into in a second here, some of the master plan concepts for these various potential uses. I'm gonna zoom in on this here, just so the maps are a little bit bigger. I think everyone here probably generally knows what we're talking about, but it is approximately 20 acres of land that sits just south of the existing Alaris Center parking facilities, just north of 17th Avenue and immediately west of 42nd Street north there. You can see where the property is situated, south of the Alaris. Overall, like I said, there is about 20 acres of development potential. One of the existing Alaris parking lots, it's a little bit washed out here, but one of the existing parking lots does finger its way, the farthest south lot down into the property area. The area of interest for the BMX track, and you'll see this here, is immediately to the west of that. That lot overall is about 4.91 acres. The BMX track facility we're looking is, that unused footprint there is about two acres as it exists today. In addition to that, just south is Lot 10 Block 1, about a 5.5 acre parcel owned by the city. Then up to the northeast, Lot 7 Block 1, which is about 1.6 acres owned by the city. There is this Lot 8 Block 1 of the Dank's resubdivision, which currently is not owned by the city, just north of six acres. And then, south of that is Lot 9 Block 1, which is about three and a half acres. So, there's a decent amount of land in the area as we consider all of these potential uses. And as I mentioned, working with Tom, developed some of the concepts as to how they all would potentially fit together, and if some different configuration, if I point out, this is platted, there is right-of-way through the center. The only real impediment, I think, to changing any of this configuration is that existing parking facility, because there are no real utilities or anything else that is currently running through the center of it. So, there's utilities surrounding the property, but the potential to reconfigure it, pretty much a blank palette if you look at the city potentially owning all of this in the future for these, some of these complementary uses to the Alaris. Then I'll ask Tom to point out some of the highlights of the concepts we've developed to date.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the City Council. Tom Wesley with Icon Architectural Group. Thanks for letting us come here and discuss this master plan effort. So, leading up and kind of spearheaded by the BMX group, we've kind of been working with A2S and Sean and the city. We've departed on this effort of master planning this entire, you know, 20 acres. So, with the BMX and identifying the existing utility infrastructure and kind of capitalizing on existing parking structures, we started to lay out and try to create some vision of what opportunities lie within these 20 acres. And it's really quite amazing what we can fit on here based on all those other organizations that were identified earlier on. But, like Sean had mentioned, I don't know if this, yeah, so, the BMX is up in the northwest corner, adjacent to the parking lot that you see. And then, one of the other organizations that we've been, when working with and discussing is potential for a children's museum, as well as a destination park with Grand Forks Park District. And so, that would be, what we've master planned is be adjacent to the south, kind of taking that five and a half acre parcel that Sean had identified, so the southwest quadrant. And then, as you work around, on the south end of that would be some potential for some stormwater retention, which is gonna be needed on this site, just to maximize, or take care of the 20-plus acres, so. And then, as you head to the east, along 17th, towards 42nd, to that corner, could be something like a learning center, education center. And then, as you work your way north from that, there's an opportunity for doing some indoor turf facility as well. And so, and then, as you progress further north, there could be some potential for other athletics, whether it be baseball, softball. And then, there's additional opportunity here, I think, for just some private commercial development, which I think really, as we look at master planning and developing this, and you put all these uses here, it's really gonna start to address some additional needs of public, of private commercial development, of serving underutilized services. So, whether it's be restaurant or fast food or gas stations, whatever it be, but there is some private opportunity development that could reside here as well. And so, just kind of an overall concept of, you know, in the foreground here is the BMX track. And then, off to the right, and as you get further to the background, would be the children's museum, and then further back towards 17th could be some learning center, a indoor practice facility with indoor turf for soccer, baseball. Could be a multi-court facility as well. So, I think that's kind of, I wanna stay pretty high level over here. There's some anxious children in the crowd, so I wanna make sure they get an opportunity up here as well, so.
Todd? Are you, did you have one more?
Yeah, one more.
Oh, yeah, one more.
So, just the last piece here before we turn it back to Todd. From the research that Mr. Schill highlighted as far as uses and complementary needs, that may fit well here south of the Alaris, we've started working with Ryan Brooks in the Planning Department to look at the concept of what a planned unit development might look like for these parcels of property. So, once we've identified the uses and we've started to, like I said, outline what the district boundary is from the previous couple of graphics here we showed, essentially assigning those to be permitted uses, working within that then for what would the application and exemptions process be. Ultimately, I would see this PUD document being foundational for whatever the long-term lease program would look like. And we have started some of those conversations with Mr. Gossett's office around that long-term application process that would fit within this PUD form of development as we're currently concepting it. So, that's a piece yet to come, but Mr. Brooks in the Planning Department has been helpful just starting to outline some of what that would look like as well within this development area. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Todd.
So, the main event, we have all these kids here this evening. So, we tried to find how can we move forward with just the BMX. Some of those, the buildings and stuff, that's a long, that's a mid-long-term strategy. These folks want to get in there sooner rather than later, and they want to get in there this year and start competing. I think in the city's interest, we want to make sure we're creating youth activities that are close to town where kids can actually come in and provide. Right now, they're out on Highway 2 on this, and this would be a way for people to really use this facility. So, I'll let Mr. Gossett speak for himself. But, what we're moving forward with and what we briefed the Alaris Center Commission is that we would move forward with a short-term license agreement. When I say short-term, the initial would be no longer than five years. It would be something less than a lease perspective, but it would get us going and get us moving forward this year and kind of see how this really functions. It would also entail an agreement with the Alaris Center and Spectra regarding how they would kind of work together from a marketing perspective, concessions, deal points, sponsorships, all that. That'll all be on the Alaris Center side, and how, since they're kind of adjacent to their property, how they would work together. That'll be on the Alaris Center side, working with Spectra as we move forward. The three things that they've asked for the BMX club beyond the city working and getting this to the point where they can start moving forward, working with the Alaris Center and the Commission, Spectra is to, that we would help support some of the stormwater improvements. And those are gonna be minor in this case, there is a parking lot adjacent, and we're gonna have to interconnect with the storm. I think, we don't know the numbers, but I'm sure Tom and Sean will come back with what a particular number is. Number two is electrical, and I was informed by A2S that electrical cost for NOTAC to serve this is about $8,000 to $9,000, that would be a cost. And then, finally, the last cost would be, this is a dirt track, however, on the start and finish lines and on the curves, they want asphalt. And so, one of the requests is that the city would in-kind provide the asphalt to that. They're gonna have a track builder that will lay it down and do it how they want to do, but they'd ask for those three things. The fourth thing that we're doing, and whether it's with A2S or with Icon to help, we're trying to help project manage this. This is a city property, it's adjacent to the Alaris Center. We want to make sure this looks right and really functions well. So, we are gonna have to do some in-kind support to make sure when the track builder comes to town, everything kind of works out the way we want it to work out. Those are the things that they're asking for as part of that. So, with that, I think the BMX group has some slides that they probably want to tell their story themselves, and then, all of us are here for any question and answer.
Oh, thank you, Tom, Mr. Feen, Mr. Gaddy, Mr. Wesley, not Tom, sorry, Thomas.
My name is Jason Azile. I've been with Red River BMX for eight years now. Just wanna say thank you to Mayor Bochensky and City Council for having us this evening. A little bit about us, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We exist to enhance youth activity for the community. And when we say youth activity, I mean, we've got racers that are, did we have a two-year-old?
So, hopefully, being one of the youngest this year.
Yeah, so we got, I mean, kids from two all the way up to, last year, we had a lady that is nationally known, and she was 70, 71 years old, that came and raced at our facility. So, I mean, it's for everybody. And recently, since I've been there in eight years, every year, our numbers have grown. Last year, we averaged 85 to 110 riders every night that we raced, with our big race of the year bringing in 250 riders from, you know, from the different states, South Dakota, Minnesota, and a few other states. So, currently, we're located, you know, at the, it's property of the Grand Forks Golf Club, which was already talked about, out on Highway 2. So, it's not ideal, it's gotten us by, and that's, I guess, what they offered it to us as a temporary solution. So, that's where we're at there. The benefit to the Grand Forks community, you know, currently, we host our weekly race. We've been doing two races a week with a practice night. And then, we will host our regional races, which was the bigger one, I told you, about 250 riders. And with a facility like this, it'll give us an opportunity to also host a national race, which will bring riders in from almost every state that there is. I mean, it's a big following, so. So, and then, uh...
Just one thing quick, I think it's important to note that one of the last national races, one of the last summer nationals, I think it was, was a 1.4 million economic impact to the community. So, I think that's important to note as well.
Yeah, people fly in from all these different states to hit the national races and stuff. It's pretty impressive. So, and assist the local economy, you know, with sales tax, revenue, hotel sales. And like we mentioned before, when they come to these events, you know, the retail shopping, the restaurants, and all that, so. And our plan is, for the new facility is at the Alaris Center, which ties in with the other future plans, which would be great to see with all the kid stuff out there. The new track build will include features needed to host our national event, which I spoke about, which would be a great to the community. It'll assist in growing the sport, which is currently one of the fastest-growing sports in the nation. It's an Olympic event. We have a lady from St. Cloud, Elise Post, who has a silver medal, silver medal, you know, in the Olympics. So, I mean, kind of a whole local girl, you know, I mean, so. You know, add new events, you know, that'll assist in lower-income families to become involved in local athletic events. We have provided helmets, bikes, we have loaner bikes, and different equipment to help in that. So, like you said, we've got a professional track built by Dirt Trends. They go throughout the nation, and they build these tracks for, our one on Highway 2 was not built by them. It was, we built it, so this will be a huge improvement. It'll be done top-notch, really nice, they do a great job, so. That's what we're looking towards. We've partnered with our local partners so far, City Grand Forks, Icon, Park District, Visitor Borough, Grand Forks, the Alaris Center. We've got local sponsors, Deeks Pizza, Stangle Signature Graphics, Once Upon a Child, Forks Radiator. We've got PS Doors and many others that have done in the past and are new to this year or two, so that'll be a big help. Any questions?
Council, you got any questions?
Yeah. Mr. DeZeele, thanks for being here tonight. If the city moves forward with this and the track builders come, was it in May? Is that correct?
May 15.
How quickly are we going to be racing until?
Takes the track builder, he said 10 days, I believe, to do the build of the actual track.
I know exactly how she feels, buddy.
Yes, 10 days to build the track, and then we'll have, you know, other stuff, you know, like bleachers and whatnot and all that to go, you know, so, I mean, I would say...
July?
Oh, yeah.
June?
Yeah.
Great, great.
Yep.
Thank you, awesome.
I think it's important to note, too, the Alara's Commission did unanimously support this, and Spectra's kind of really vetted that license agreement. It is a low cost, you know, with a potential great benefit. I got the opportunity to go out there by the gun club and watch last summer some races, and I would say the parking was not quite up to snuff. You had to park in a mud hole and try to work your way over there. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but it'd be nice to, you know, to get a higher quality out of the BMX, so. Any other questions or comments to Mr. DeZeele? Otherwise, I know, you know, the others will be available.
I do have one question.
Mayor, if I could say one thing, you know, even though I say we're going to start with some of these, you know, first-in infrastructure pieces, I think if this is, becomes more successful and it becomes more part of the longer-term plan, then you could see us adding water and sewer and all the other amenities, but this is kind of a first-in thing, just so everyone realizes. This is, gets them going this year, knowing that a longer-term plan is coming, and as we serve this area with water, wastewater, and other more robust things, and this really works well, we can then maybe lengthen this out as part of it. So, that's, it's an incremental strategy at this point.
We're just looking for approval on the license agreement, is that correct?
And if you're so inclined, I did mention some of those in-kind costs, if you'd be willing to consider that as part of the approval this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Veen?
Yeah, just a question on the design. Is every one of these tracks different across the country, or is there a standardized design?
Every one is different, yep.
Okay, and so you guys are working with a design that fits this location, that'll be specific, and is it a certain length that you try to have when you have one of these?
Correct, they do keep it within a, they're all different lengths, but it's fairly close, you know, and they're different layouts. Some come around where they got the start line and the finish line in the same, some will be on the opposite sides. They lay them out to where the location of it is going to be, and the obstacles all in between are all different, corners are different, you know, so, yeah, but they, with the worker, they make it fit to where your property is, you know.
And the asphalt, is the advantage to that, of course, that's where a lot of the wearing and tearing, I suppose, of the track is?
A lot of the wear and tear, and being outdoors with the rain and the weather, that's your biggest, you get the biggest erosion in the corners, so, depending on the summer, sometimes you've got to do a lot of maintenance and repair, you know, throughout the summer where the asphalt corners, you won't have to deal with that, you know.
And so, and the way this is designed, do you have the equipment to keep it compacted? Do you have to wet it, compact it, and do that kind of thing to maintain the condition of the dirt track, part of the track?
Yep, after the build is done, usually every spring, we'll have to roll it, and we rent, we got a couple places that we deal with that donate and stuff, and we rent a roller and stuff and roll it out, you know.
And this will be set up for spectators, then?
Correct, yes.
And how do we maintain it? Is it fenced in and locked, or how do you make, how do you keep?
Correct, it'll, yep, fenced, yep, fenced and locked, yep. Because, yeah, we, it's only for bikes, pedal bikes, you know, so we keep, you know, even the RV cars you don't want on there because they'll spin out, and then they, you know, it's all clay, so it'll tear it up, you know, if you do that, so it's, yep, it'll be...
Is it a members-only, then, that can use it?
It is, it's, we're sanctioned through USABMX, which is our national sanction, so it's through that. And then we do, every year, we have a couple races throughout the summer that are free races to the public. You can come in, try it, you know, you get a free membership for that day to do it and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Weber?
I'll leave it to Mr. Weigl to make the motion, hopefully with the...
Well, Mr. Weber, I'm going to recuse myself.
You're going to recuse yourself, okay? Very good.
Okay, I'll leave it up to you, then.
I'll make a quick comment. Thanks for all the work and bringing this great idea forward. It's very exciting, and I'll move approval with the in-kind pavement as well.
All right, do we have a second? We got a second from Mr. Veen. Do we want to go through the process on Mr. Weigl first?
Yes, please, we need a motion and a second to recuse Mr. Weigl.
Oh, I'll move.
Yeah, let's go to that motion first. We got a, well, if Mr. Weber made the motion and Mr. Veen seconded, so all those in favor of allowing Mr. Weigl to excuse himself from this vote signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, you're excused, sir. Now, Mr. Weber.
That motion again?
He has a motion to approve, let's get it back on the record.
Exciting, a motion to get to make, move approval along with the in-kind financing for the pavement.
Thank you, sir. Do you need more?
If I could expand that.
Please.
I would like in-kind for the asphalt.
For the asphalt.
For the electrical service, stormwater improvements, and any of the in-kind support with developer to make sure it all comes together.
That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Weber, we have a second. Second from Mr. Veen. Any further debate or comments, Mr. Santi?
A quick comment, so we're not going to see the license agreement before moving forward. We're given carte blanche, assuming that the city attorney will be able to finish authoring and execute, correct? My understanding of the motion is it's subject to a city attorney approval for the license agreement. Right, and I understand that, but we're not going to see it. Typically, we would see an agreement like this prior to providing approval.
Mayor Bochensky, Mr. Santi is right, you know, we're trying to fast-track this. If it would help the council, Dan, would you mind going, what would the license agreement entail so there, before the final approval, that there's a sense of what that would look like?
Yeah, and I don't have all the details as far as the fees or the rental and things like that. That's something that I got to, I've got the information back at the office from Anna Rosberg at the Alara's, but it would be a license agreement that could be subject to being terminated, and also wouldn't necessarily provide absolute exclusive use, because if you do that, then it becomes a lease, and there's some other issues with respect to leasing city property. So, I'd be more than happy, I mean, I will have this license agreement done, I think, within the next couple of weeks, well in advance of the timeframe for BMX folks to start the construction, and you could certainly bring it before the city council for their all. I'm not interested in slowing this down, nor am I concerned that the agreement will not be fully complete in what we would want. I just want to make sure everyone understands that we are moving this forward without seeing the agreement, and I'm okay with it as long as everyone else.
I think we can, one thing I think that we can point out is the fact that I believe this is revocable basically anytime by city council, so we would have to be able to bring that back anytime and revoke it, so it's really a risk that the BMX group is taking by making this investment there, because they're kind of at the whim of what council decides. So, with that being said, I'm comfortable with it if there's any other members that are...
And Mayor Bochensky, I will also, when we know the final cost of our investment on this, I will also share that so that everyone knows that, too. We'll keep you informed along the way.
All right, any further debate?
Yep.
Mr. Veen?
I would just like to add a couple more comments here, because I am the council representative on the Alara's Commission, where I've seen this multiple times before, and wanted to just say, on behalf of the Commission, I think we voted unanimously to support this also, that it makes sense. I know for myself personally, it's, that land has been sitting there vacant for 20-plus years, and this is going to be, I think, a good utilization of that property. It's relatively expensive land, so the lease is probably the only way that we can get this to happen, and so it makes sense to do a lease, I believe. It's not necessarily long-term, if a much higher and better use came along, we still have that ability to do it should something like that, that happen. And the fact that we're paying for part of this, I mean, if something did happen, it's our money that's, that would be, and I won't say wasted, but used in the intermittent time. So, anyway, I think it's a good thing. I think the most important thing I would like to say about all of this property out there is make sure whatever we do, it's compatible and consistent with the Alara Center. The city has, you know, as we are, and Mayor, you and I are part of the land use planning, we could look at where is the best use for a number of things, and since the Alara Center is somewhat landlocked now, this is the only area for future expansion. I think we have to keep that into consideration as we look at future uses of this, but I really believe this is compatible for what we're trying to do now. And so that's why I make the motion, had, seconded the motion to approve this.
Sounds good. I just would point out, it does have, it is a license, not a lease, so it has less property rights than even a lease would have, so, yeah, sorry.
And that makes sense.
Yep. Any further debate? Mr. Weber?
On the flip side of that, while this is all very important discussion, this is exactly the kind of event and activity that we need to develop in the community, and so my hope is that this will be a pilot for something even bigger and better for BMX in the future, whether that would be indoor or whatever that might be. So, hoping that the best of luck for this effort. Thanks.
All right, any other further debate from council? Ms. Dockler?
No, but I do have, actually, that was a lie, I have a quick question. I know that we had, when I had talked to Councilman Weber, or not Weber, Councilman Weigl a little bit earlier about this, just wondering what kind of access the general public is going to have. I know that it was mentioned that every, there's a few events in the summer that are free races, but will there be other additional things that pull in the Grand Forks community to the BMX club and to having use and access of that, since we are using public funds?
All right, who'd be best to answer that one?
Okay, so...
You want to just let us know who you are real quick?
Oh, sorry, my name is Danielle Dice, I am one of the board members for Red River Red River BMX is completely nonprofit, and it is 100% run by volunteers. So, to get down to answering her question, in the past, we have been able to host a variety of different activities. Sometimes it would be bringing out daycare groups for different types of field trips, and giving those kids a time during the day to try out the sport. We've also hosted other group events, we've talked about doing birthday parties, and really making it a point to be able to schedule other events, not necessarily directly related to our race night or our practice night. All of that comes back to having volunteer support and growing our BMX community. So, if we can grow our sport and get more families involved and get kids involved, we have more opportunities and, available to do some of those other things like that. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
All right, anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. 2.4 carries unanimously. All right, we'll try to move on here to get to the work session. Did we have any citizen comments?
We have none.
Thank you. All right, citizen comments is closed. Number four, Mr. Phelan, anything?
Thank you.
All right, five mayor and city and council member comments, any comments on this from council? I've got nothing tonight, so we've been looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Weber, we have a second, second from Mr. Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Let's call Grand Forks City Council's work session from Monday, March 29th, to order under item one, general business, item 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Can't we get more people engaged and involved? And I think if you look at recent history, we've gotten large pools of people now that are really stepping up, wanting to participate in government. And I just think of, sometimes we've had five to 10 individuals interview as part of that. So I think that's a really great thing. That didn't always happen here. The difference with Mayor Brown, Mayor Brown would, number one, I think right now we're getting more candidates that want to get involved. Number two, under Mayor Brown, we would generally, department heads and would kind of vet who they thought was a good candidate for their area. So if it was, if it was a library board, we'll say, since that's kind of been the highlighted one, Mayor Brown would have deferred to the library board and piloted the library director on providing recommendations back to them. So we would have done all the advertising. They would have done some of the vetting and some of the interviewing, would have come back as a recommendation to Mayor Brown. He would have reviewed it and then made a recommendation to city council. I think what Mayor Bochensky has done is that he's taken more of an individual interest. And so we're doing all the advertising, getting things ready. And then moving forward, the mayor has taken some personal responsibility in doing those interviews and making those recommendations. And so a little mayor's taken more personal responsibility, Mayor Brown, or Mayor Brown and Mayor Bochensky took more of a personal responsibility. Mayor Brown took a more of a delegative, but that's what Mayor Brown was too. He delegated a lot to us as we moved forward administrative. Still took responsibility. Both individuals take responsibility. So that's the difference. I think the other thing we've done better is sometimes on, on these committee actions, we would miss dates. Like, we would come back here and somebody was six months out and I recall our council, current council president would make remarks like, who's, who's minding this store and why is this happening? So I got to give a lot of credit to Spencer Holverson in our office here at mayor, city minister. He's taking more of the responsibility of tracking when these things are coming off, is where we sometimes fumbled the ball around a little bit and muddled through. So we've been doing a much better job and we've been doing a much better job thanks to Spencer. So we're trying to do a better job on that. So that's really what, what comes to you in both veins. And the one thing we do, whether it's to Mayor Brown or Mayor Bochensky, city administrative staff take a lot of pride in what we do, how we perform, and let's be on task. And if there's anybody who on city council that wants something presented or wants something on the agenda, I think we've bent over backwards for anybody talking about the BMX club, okay? We've bent over backwards to get to yes, to try to get something moving forward because we're passionate about the community. Let's try to get to yes and move forward. So hopefully you guys all feel that on city council is if you want something on the agenda, we want to make it happen for you. And council president Sandy and I were speaking a little bit before the meeting. I think that one thing that's changed, not only with a different administration, but this COVID pandemic changed. We haven't engaged as much as we did in person. And so we haven't developed as robust relationships and face-to-face engagements. I think that's been the biggest difference. So whatever you guys contemplate tonight, I think we should get out of this pandemic. We should get more engaged in person before we make any large changes in what we've been doing. Because I think that's what we've been missing. We've missed some connections on how we've been working together. And I'm looking forward to us moving out of this pandemic and being more engaged as not only as city administration, but as a city council. Because we, after all, we are one team. So that's, that's what I have.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Phelan. So before we engage in our discussion, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Phelan directly based upon what he just mentioned? Great hearing. None. Under item 2.1, current processes of setting council agendas and potential changes to city code related to whether it's council wants to set their own agendas and/or any other changes people would like to make. And city staff and Mr. Gaustad, our city attorney, was nice enough to put up Article One related to meetings from Grand Forks City Code, Chapter Two. I can't, there were six pages and they did a very nice job of highlighting all of the pertinent information related to the agendas, how the agenda is set, how you suspend the agenda, how you would add things to the agenda after the agenda has been set. Does anyone have any comments related to the attachment or the information provided by the city attorney's office? Okay, so it was straightforward. Excellent. Related to that information that was provided, does anyone have any comments or thoughts related to how the current agendas are set and/or if there are any thoughts related to whether the council should take a more robust involvement in that or any suggested thoughts or changes? Mr. Weber?
I have a comment. Sure. First of all, in the moment of a council debate, I frequently come up with ideas, oh, we need to do this or we need to do that. And I don't think that those items have automatically always come to the agenda. And I don't think they necessarily should. We're having a free flow of ideas up here sometimes. And what I have found is that if it's important enough to me and I follow up with staff, that those items then do come forward, generally in a more thoughtful manner than I had originally proposed. So I don't have any concern about how the agenda is currently set. And I certainly don't have any interest as an individual council member in taking on the responsibility of trying to create an agenda each week. And I suspect also that what you've said about the pandemic, it's changed the kind of social fabric of the whole process. At the same time that we had a new mayor, so there were some important changes that occurred there in the legislative environment here that affected some of that. But for the most part, I'm generally satisfied and more than satisfied, I'm quite happy with it. Beyond that, there are items that can occur between Thursday, when the agenda is set, and Monday, when we have the actual meeting. And that, that requires someone from the council bringing an item forward for discussion. And the way that we have done that in the past has been generally by consensus of the council, by habit. That's, that's how that's done. That hasn't always worked out recently for whatever reason. And so I think it may be worth having a discussion about changing that specific process to what should the vote be? If we have an item that a council member wants to bring forward that's not on the agenda, is there an opportunity to revise that process, possibly by a simple vote or some other vote? And I'd be interested in Mr. Gaustad's thoughts about that.
Sure. There is really two components of the question. First is, and I'm going to move this off the table quickly. When you're in a special meeting, you cannot change the agenda. Whenever, once the special meeting is called, like tonight is a special meeting because it's not a regular meeting that you conduct all the time. I think you had another special meeting last November. Whatever is on that agenda by state law, the open meeting laws requires that that agenda be stuck to and you can't deviate from it by adding to the agenda. So that, that's the first topic. That's the easy one. With respect to a, a regular meeting that you have, and you guys meet every week, right? Either in the committee of the whole or, well, they're both really kind of city council meetings, but you meet once a week. Under North Dakota law, you generally can add to the agenda, except that your ordinances require unanimous consent to do so by, and so when you, if you brought up an item that you wanted to bring to the attention and have it considered at a council meeting, that can certainly be brought to the attention and you can move to modify the agenda. But then you need unanimous consent from the entire city council. Now, one of the things I think you need to be mindful of is a lot of folks review the agenda items and will show up or not show up at a meeting depending on what's on the agenda. And so I, you know, and I don't know why the unanimous consent was put in there, but I'm, pure speculation on my part, it might be to assure that the public has, you know, there is some checks and balances. By unanimous consent, that's sufficient so that even though a general public person or somebody from the public hasn't appeared, you at least have seven of the council members voting to have this on. So if you were going to make a change, you'd have to change your ordinances. And I think I've highlighted that there's two spots that are in the, in the ordinance that talk about unanimous consent. That there, that my suggestion is at least some sort of super majority, maybe not unanimous, but some sort of, you know, five to two vote or something like that so that, you know, the public is at least knowing that there's some super majority vote to change the agenda on an item.
Very good. And the, so to go back, the two issues, the agenda for a special meeting, generally, that is one case where council members generally are being more directive about the agenda. For instance, tonight, council set the agenda for this special meeting. So we'll just want to be mindful that we are leaving that broad enough for the kind of free flow exchange of ideas that I'm hoping happens tonight. The second one, yes, I think a discussion about an ordinance change, whether it be a simple majority or some other process, rather than the consensus that we have been operating under. Maybe we want to stay with that consensus or maybe move to a simple majority or somewhere in between. Yeah. I'm just opening that up for further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anyone else have any thoughts related to Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Gaustad.
Just one more comment on this. And just so that you're aware, the special meetings are usually very precise in the topic, right? There's one or two items that, that are being considered. In my experience, that's what happens when the special meeting is. You call something and it, because you need to, you can't wait for that one week period of time to gather. So there's something that, that's been my experience in other governmental bodies is, is it's a, you know, one or two items on the agenda that, that have to be considered and acted on by the council. The other thing is that there is North Dakota Attorney General's opinions out there that you can't just be so broad that it, you know, you can talk about anything. There is some limitation on how broad you can be on special meeting agendas.
I've seen perhaps two major types of special meetings. Those where we have some issue that's come forward that needs immediate action. The other has been more visioning, strategic planning, and that, that one needs to be sufficiently open. Any suggestions for us on that?
I think you just, it's crafting the language for that agenda item and not making it so broad that it becomes, I can talk about anything. I guess my-
How do you feel about tonight's agenda?
I think it was fine. You know, my experience has generally been in litigation matters where, you know, we have to bring to the attention, we have to talk about, and we've got a council or government body that hasn't gathered and I need to speak to them about something. And so it's pretty singular in what's being discussed.
Good. Thanks again.
Great. Anyone have any thoughts related to Mr. Weber's potential changes of the process for adding items to the agenda? Mr. Kavami?
So to go along with Mr. Weber's comments on adding items to the agenda, I think, I do think it should be something that's easier for the council to do. And, and my reasoning for that's a little bit different. And my reasoning is that as someone that often on Fridays is, is busy or Mondays is busy, this would be no surprise to anyone that's watched maybe some growth meeting or growth fund committee meetings. For me, I found it very important that we have those minutes and agendas available as early as possible. I think Mr. Phelan detailed the process and detailed how we have things available. And I fully respect and understand how long that takes. But I guess, I'm curious as to what our requirement is on, on century code for when those agendas need to be locked or, or how that reads.
You've got much more flexibility with regular meetings than you do with the special meetings. With special meetings, you got to provide notice, not only to the members of the governing body, but you have to provide notice to the official newspaper as well. There isn't a quote "time period" for special meetings. It's what's called a reasonable period of time. And it's all going to be based upon the facts and circumstances. When did you know about you were going to have this special meeting and you provided notice an hour before? Probably not going to cut mustard on that one. Versus if it's a pure emergency, we need to get something together, you scramble, you, you provide the notice and, and it might be one hour notice, might be sufficient, you know. So, but with the regular meetings, you have more flexibility to modify the agenda, with the exception that your ordinance requires unanimous consent.
Okay. So this next question would be more for Mr. Phelan, I think. So if you could walk me through, you know, your typical Thursday, Friday, when, when is it up? When is it locked? Wendy, and I know that obviously we have some late minute updates that, that happen.
Council president Sandy and council member Kavami. Generally, I see the draft agenda items by Thursday. And on by Friday, we, Friday end of business, we, we try to get all the staff reports with all the final agenda items. So I know sooner rather than later. So it is, you know, this is a week to week thing. So we do our best, you know, Monday's busy and Friday's business. And in between, we try to get something done. And so I think the goal should be, you know, if we could get things out by, by Thursday. But that was in part why the city of Grand Forks went to this committee of the whole for review. And then you always had a council meeting that you never felt like at a county, if you go to a commission meeting, it's, it's a one and done type thing. And so with our system, you have a committee of the whole where there's discussion deliberation. You have a whole nother week to have further discussion. So I know people like it sooner rather than later. But that was a compromise back in the day with the city council of let's create a two-meeting system so that if people have one week to kind of further ponder us moving forward. Things have gotten easier now. Everything's electronics. So, you know, back in the old day, we would print things out. But now it's easy. We do try to get everything in by Friday. You know, we have had to cheat and deliver things on Monday. But a lot of times we're dealing with other people's schedules and doing the best we can with what we got.
In 2006, Kyle, they used to mail me the planning and zoning agendas with all of the paperwork, right?
Well, I'm grateful for what you guys do. And I, and I do appreciate it. I think that my hope and my comment here is just, you know, if the expectation of a consistent draft agenda on Thursday, which seems to happen, but not always, so that we have time to react, knowing full well that, that there's additional items on there and that- this would be no surprise to anyone that's watched maybe some growth meeting, or growth fund committee meetings. For me, I found it very important that we have those minutes and agendas available as early as possible. I think Mr. Phelan detailed the process and detailed how we have things available. And I fully respect and understand how long that takes. But I guess, I'm curious as to what our requirement is on century code for when those agendas need to be locked, or how that reads.
You've got much more flexibility with regular meetings than you do with the special meetings. With special meetings, you've got to provide notice, not only to the members of the governing body, but you have to provide notice to the official newspaper as well. There isn't a quote "time period" for special meetings. It's what's called a reasonable period of time. And it's all going to be based upon the facts and circumstances. When did you know about you were going to have this special meeting, and you provided notice an hour before? Probably not going to cut mustard on that one. Versus if it's a pure emergency, we need to get something together. You scramble, you provide the notice, and it might be one-hour notice, might be sufficient. You know, so, but with the regular meetings, you have more flexibility to modify the agenda. With the exception that your ordinance requires unanimous consent.
Okay, so this next question would be more for Mr. Phelan, I think. So if you could walk me through, you know, your typical Thursday, Friday. When is it up? When is it locked? And I know that obviously we have some late-minute updates that happen.
Council President Sandy and Council Member Cavami. Generally, I see the draft agenda items by Thursday. And by Friday, we, Friday end of business, we try to get all the staff reports with all the final agenda items. So I know sooner rather than later. So it is, you know, this is a week-to-week thing. So we do our best, you know, Monday's busy and Friday's business. And in between, we try to get something done. And so I think the goal should be, you know, if we could get things out by Thursday. But that was in part why the city of Grand Forks went to this committee of the whole for review. And then you always had a council meeting that you never felt like at a county. If you go to a commission meeting, it's a one-and-done type thing. And so with our system, you have a committee of the whole where there's discussion deliberation. You have a whole another week to have further discussions. So I know people like it sooner rather than later. But that was a compromise back in the day with the city council of let's create a two-meeting system so that if people have one week to kind of further ponder as moving forward. Things have gotten easier now. Everything's electronics. So, you know, back in the old day, we would print things out. But now it's easy. We do try to get everything in by Friday. You know, we have had to cheat and deliver things on Monday. But a lot of times, we're dealing with other people's schedules and doing the best we can with what we've got.
In 2006, Kyle, they used to mail me the planning and zoning agendas with all of the paperwork, right?
Well, I'm grateful for what you guys do, and I do appreciate it. I think that my hope and my comment here is just, you know, if the expectation of a consistent draft agenda on Thursday, which seems to happen, but not always, so that we have time to react, knowing full well that there's additional items on there. And that if we need to add something, you can communicate with us or someone and say, "Hey, you know, we missed this item," or "We did a late update." You know, "Here you go. Here's your information." Or, "Let's get this, you know, let's convince four or five of the council members to get this item added." So for that reason, I support switching to a supermajority. I think a simple majority would be good, but potentially, maybe that's too easy. So maybe it's a supermajority makes more sense. But I do support the idea of making it easier for us to add items.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, first of all, in the discussion about special meetings, you seem to be indicating emergency meetings and special meetings. Are they distinct?
No, I didn't mean to. I use them interchangeably. A special meeting is anything that's not set during regularly scheduled meeting. And Marine has sent, we have to establish what those regular meeting dates are on an annual basis. So any meeting, whether it's emergency, or because it's an emergency event, any meeting that doesn't occur on one of those regularly scheduled dates would be deemed to be a special meeting.
And in the case of an emergency, where suddenly the mayor, something's happened in the city and has to call for as many council members to come together in the next hour as possible, how does, hopefully, we never have to deal with that?
We do as quickly as we can. We put together an agenda as fast as we can. We send it out to everybody, and you have to email it out or get it out in the same fashion to the governing body members as you do to the
To the press.
Press. So you email it out and explain that there's an emergency that has come up, and we need to act quickly.
Very good. And Mr. Phelan, Mr. Cavami's brought up another kind of related item or issue. Updates and documents that get added to an existing agenda. The current process for those, as Mr. Cavami mentioned, Monday afternoons are often quite busy for me. And I, sometimes those items get added in the afternoon. What is the process for adding those right now? If I don't find out from another council member, or think to go in and check and look for updates, could we improve that notification process in some way?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Weber, I think we could do a better job. Like, for example, today, you know, we perfected the committee because there were a couple errors. So we updated that document. And then, you know, God bless Mark Schell, he remembered that we did a childcare study in 2014. He sent that to me. I said, "Great idea," so I uploaded that. And those are the things we kind of did on the fly. Just trying to make the meeting more complete and perfect and more robust. That's what we did. Generally, what happens is I call Sherry to say, "Sherry, we need to update this document." And then she uploads it, sends another email out with a new agenda and references that those are updated. And I know you guys have other lives other than this city life. But we probably could do a better job, not only updating the agenda and letting you know there, but also sending you an email saying, "You should note on these two items, we edited or we added, and this is what we did," so you could track both.
Mr. Phelan, aren't all council members on the distribution list? Because once the agenda item is updated, I get an auto-email that says, "This item has been updated and/or there's a new agenda," right? I get automatically emailed that. Does everyone get those whenever it happens? No. So you need to opt in. I think there's a system to opt in for those.
That's correct. It should give you an automated email. And if you're not getting it, talk to our office, and we'll make sure you get sent out.
So anytime an agenda, anything's added, I get an email that says, "There's a new agenda."
That was going to be my request, so well done.
I'm glad we brought that. We just assumed you all got that. And then I, my concern was that it's kind of embedded. You're not quite sure. So we should send another key information. We're not hitting you the right way.
So I think that was new probably eight, nine years ago, shortly after I came on the council. So probably nobody knew about it, right? So sorry about that. But it sure makes getting, knowing that there's an updated agenda, easy because I always get the emails.
Good thing we're having this meeting.
Well, right, yes.
With that noted, I go along with Mr. Cavami's idea of a supermajority. We want, I'm interested in making it easier to add agenda items, but I don't want to make it so easy that I can come in with 10 crazy ideas each week.
Right, only three crazy ideas.
Yes, Mr. Veen?
I'm not going to add a lot more to the discussion. I think we've had it. I like this idea of a supermajority, too. I mean, therefore, one can't stop, but with the majority, you can get, the supermajority get that discussed. So I'm much in favor. I think that's the only issue that I'm seeing that's worth.
Mr. Weigle, any comments?
I would agree. I think, going on six years on the council, I think I remember two times, maybe, that something was brought up. So I don't think it's used very often. But I think a supermajority of five would be good as well. I'd be okay with that.
I'm just trying to remember. I think with the exception of city staff and the mayor and the city attorney bringing things last minute and asking us to add an item, I can only recall three times in 11 years that we did so. And two of them passed on a unanimous vote. One of them did not. Either way, it isn't something that will happen all the time. But yeah, good, way to go, Danny. I had one other comment or thought. Based upon my recollection and the history that I know from how the agendas were set, I believe perhaps it was Mayor Pol, when Mayor Polovitz was mayor, it was the finance director that set the agenda. And after Mayor Polovitz, it was, it got changed to the city, Rick Duquette did the agenda. And then when Mayor Brown came in, he changed it to himself. And I, or I can't remember why that city code was changed. Mr. Torst?
My recollection is, and Todd, if you have more to add, let me know. But it's when we moved to having a city administrator, administrative coordinator at the time, Mr. Richard Warren, I believe that's when that changed. And it moved from the city finance director setting the agenda to the city administrator office.
And why did we change from the city administrator to the mayor?
I think it's always been the mayor or his or her delegate. So the city administrator was always the next in line with the mayor. And so I think previous to, if you look, and we got an administrative coordinator that became a city administrator in the early 2000s. And so that's when that shifted. I think, and before that, you had department heads that kind of created their own silo, we'll say. You had service safety committee. You had a finance and development committee, too, overall, all those years, too. And so, and you had 14 members of a city council that went away in the early 2000s, too. So it's a much, I think it's a much better and a much more centralized and a much better teamwork approach that we have now. Because I've been here through both phases of life here, I think it's a much better coordinated team than we had before.
Sure. So, but knowing that you're already setting the agenda, based upon what you said earlier, why isn't it city administrator and city code? I'm not saying it should be. I'm asking the question.
I would say, I would say generally, I think you always want your mayor in charge. The mayor is the CEO of the city of Grand Forks. And certainly, as a city administrator, I'm more the chief operating officer. And so I think you always want to let whomever the public has elected as our leader, citywide, you want them to be able to delegate to who they think has passed. I think that's just good governance to, at the end of the day, the mayor is in charge of the city administration.
And technically, Todd, you, under your contract, specifically answer the mayor, not both the mayor and city council?
I answer to the mayor.
Directly to the mayor, right. And so you, acting as the mayor's arm, are ultimately setting the city council agenda that the mayor is directing. And of course, the mayor is taking input from, in theory, taking input from all city staff on agenda items that need to be on the agenda. And then if something comes up that one of us want added to the agenda, I assume we would reach out to Todd and the mayor and talk about it. And if we don't get the answer we're looking for, we can make the motion to add an agenda item at our meeting. And whether it's a unanimous vote, or a supermajority, or a simple majority, we can get the vote to add something to the agenda. Is that?
I don't want to lose the
Yeah, please, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, President Sandy. I don't want to lose the ability to reach out directly to the mayor, to the city administrator. But I also think there's a role for council leadership in that process.
Yeah, so of course, certainly, I understand what you're saying. And I think in the past, people have come to me and asked me to talk to the mayor about getting things added to the agendas. And we have talked through things and put things on the agenda that have been asked for by city council membership. I certainly am happy to be part of that conversation with the mayor. My point is, everyone should feel comfortable making the request to the mayor directly if they want to. Or you're welcome to come to me, or anyone else that sits in this chair in the future. I think that makes perfect sense, so. Ms. Dockler, any comments?
Not on this.
Okay. So should we, yeah, Mr. Veen?
You know, I don't have a, I just want to throw out one issue. What's unique about city council meetings is we really have two branches of government coming together. You've got your administration, which the mayor oversees, and then you've got the policymakers. And the idea is they have to work together, but they're still separate. And I think there's value to them being separate. And there's importance to doing that. So, you know, right now, I haven't ever experienced any problem with any of what we said. I'm not for sure it matters to me who's setting the agenda, to be honest with you. But if we start having a problem, then we may, we would probably need to reconsider this if it becomes, and not that I think we have. But again, I look at it, it is two branches of government. And the city council, it is a meeting of the city council. When we have city council meetings, the mayor chairs it. But all the actions are by city council, except that there's a tie. And then at that point in time, the mayor breaks a tie, and that's how the decisions are made. So there is some difference here. We can't forget that, I think, in this process. That's all I'm trying to say. And I'm not saying anything is even broken. But, you know, we do create the policy, and we can change the ordinances to do whatever we think is in the best interest of the city. And we can talk about that. We do that on a regular basis when we create ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Good point. Mr. Weigle?
Just real quick, Mr. Gustad, have you done any research what, you know, I hate saying, "What is Fargo doing?" or "What is Bismarck doing?" or "What is Minot doing?" But I think when we look at some of our policies and procedures, it might be nice to have some insight into what other communities are doing as well.
I have not personally. I know I've talked to city staff about making that, to find out from those other communities. One thing you had to be mindful of, as Fargo is a city commission. It's a little different. And you don't have a mayor, but you've got a president of the commission that does vote. And there isn't wards in the city commission. So it's maybe a little different in that regard. But I have not personally reached out to the other communities.
Is that something you could do? Because I think it'd be good information to have before we vote on changing the ordinance or something along those lines. I'd like to see the full picture, just in case.
I'd be more than happy to reach out. I have a really good working relationship with Fargo City Attorney, so.
Yeah, I don't, I guess certainly more information is always better than less. Ultimately, we would have to add this specific agenda item back to a future, probably, committee of the whole meeting. Any other, any comments related to that? Mr. Weber?
So are you suggesting that we should consider shifting to a city commission style of government?
No, not at all. Just, I'd like to see what others are doing as far as adding an agenda item. If it's, you know, the unanimous vote, if it's a supermajority, if it's a simple majority. Nothing about the commission.
Very good.
Unless you're
No, I'm just kidding. No. One other comment, if I may, quickly.
Yes, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Veen, thanks for pointing out the separation of branches. It's an important aspect of the conversation. And it is our responsibility to set the policy, and we can change that policy, you know, with proper process at any time. So it's good we're having this discussion. But there's one other piece. It isn't just the mayor's opportunity to affect in the event of a tie. He also holds the power of the veto. Yes.
Mr. Veen, did you have anything to add?
Excellent.
Maybe Council President Sandy, if I could say one. I think the beauty of what system we have is that we have to be here every week. And then, and our current mayor has attended a majority of the committee of the whole meetings. As you recall, Mayor Brown attended probably in the minority of committee of the whole meetings. And Mayor Burchinsky may choose in the future not to attend every committee of the whole. But that's really, we see as your meeting. We're here as administration. We're here to brief those items. So I think there's a real distinction between the committee of the whole meeting and the city council meeting. And I think the beauty you have is, if we were to be obstinate, we'd make it awful, awfully painful on ourselves because we'd show up here every Monday. And so it wouldn't be in our best interest not to serve what you want as city council. Wouldn't be in my best interest as city administrator to create some sort of rift. So just so you know, that's our mindset. Hey, we've got to show up here every Monday and be on our game. So let's engage you. And so that's our mindset, moving in every Monday.
Mr. Weber?
Mayor Brown had his strengths as a delegative, collaborative executive. But Mayor Burchinsky, I appreciate, and constantly increasing my appreciation for your leadership style. And not just your leadership style, but your increasing efforts to look for collaborative efforts here as well. Thanks.
Thank you. So related to how other cities are, take this approach on adding items to the agenda. Mr. Gustad, when do you, perhaps, do you think you would have that research? April 12th, or the second committee of the whole meeting in April?
I'll start sending emails and phone calls tomorrow.
Okay.
Pretty easy to reach out to, I'd probably call Bismarck. And I'd reach out to maybe some other, not maybe similar size, but other city council-type of communities and see what they're doing.
Great. So if you have the information by the April 12th meeting, if you could let the mayor and Todd know so that they could add this to the agenda. And if not, we can go to the next, the next meeting. I did actually have some questions about the document that you did provide, Mr. Gustad. And I'm not sure if you were the one specifically that did all the good highlighting on this and got this to city staff to upload. It seems to me, just in general, that some of the city code, just reading the non-highlighted portions, that perhaps some of our city code is due to be updated. Can I ask a question? On page two, number 11. First of all, I don't understand, because I'm not an attorney, although I play one on TV sometimes, I don't understand what the word "same" means at the beginning of that sentence. Same hyphen, "not to injure feelings." What does the same stand for?
I don't know either. It doesn't make sense as to why you'd put the word same in "not to injure feelings." You could just as well just say, "Not to injure feelings."
Sure. I was wondering if it was referring to the previous one, or, okay, all right.
It's a heading. It shouldn't be used to try to interpret what the ordinance means.
So related to that one, just out of curiosity, "Not to injure feelings," it says, "No personalities or reflections injurious to the feelings of any member or the harmony of the council shall be tolerated. And every person indulging in such shall be called to order by the presiding officer." Question for you. What if it's the presiding officer that's being injurious? What if I'm being an a-hole? What happens then?
I would suggest that if that is the case, that a council member will speak up and say, "You're being, my personality or my reflections have been injured." I would hope that there would be, but to be honest with you, President Sandy, I would hope that that ordinance would never be invoked.
Likewise. But it makes me wonder if that's the case. Does it need to be as part of our code? Number 25, also same, then limited. And it's related to a motion for reconsideration. A motion for reconsideration, if lost, shall not be repeated at the same meeting of the council. That makes sense. If we move to reconsider and it gets voted down, it doesn't get brought up again at the same meeting. The next sentence says, "Nor shall any question be reconsidered more than once." So you can't bring it up at the next meeting as well?
I've had some, my partner Joe Quinn and I have had some very interesting conversations
I'm sure you have.
About what motions for reconsideration mean. And then bringing a motion up in a later meeting, which is the same topic. Is that a motion for reconsideration or not? Mr. Quinn and I, I think, reached the conclusion that a motion for Mr. Quinn and I, I think, reached the conclusion that a motion for reconsideration should be done if it's, it's going to be subject to that particular ordinance section is one where it's shortly after the next meeting. You know, if the topic comes up three or four months later, I'm not sure that that's necessarily a quote, "motion for reconsideration." But I guess if that topic comes up at this council, we will certainly take a look and research that issue, so that you know for certain.
Yeah, I mean, that's good. I just wonder if, and I know that you only get paid so much, and going through the entire city code would be an arduous duty. I just, I know, for example, under number 29, the sergeant at arms, the chief of police is required to be here for every council meeting, yet I didn't see him in the back road tonight. Nothing personal to the chief, but that's what city code says. He has to be here. Not only that, he needs to go get Jeannie and drag her down here, too. So, I'm, I'm one of the.
President Sandy, I will say, I'm not for sure. I've been watching one outside this door.
There is a police officer here. The police officer is not the chief of police, however. There is an officer here, no doubt. My point is, our city code is very outdated. And that leads me to my, the last thing that I was going to mention, unless, Mr. Kavami, you.
Just to echo back on your point that you just made. So that was something that affected a motion and then reconsider of a motion that I had on my stint here, and we couldn't revisit the fact. And I think that if it's a time period later, as you just stated, the ambiguity there gets the blood flow going, right? So if it's that meeting, that's great. So can we, is that something that we can explore, along with exploring the supermajority? Can we explore what that language is and get more detail? So can we not revisit in the next meeting, but then, two meetings down, are we good?
Those are all very, very good questions. Not one that I, and to be honest with you, I don't mean to punt on these, but I wasn't prepared to go through the, these ordinance by ordinance. A motion for reconsideration, I would think, is, that meeting, you can't bring it up again. If you bring up the same motion at the very next meeting, I probably would conclude that's a motion for reconsideration. It shouldn't be brought up again. But if, as it becomes old and cold, maybe it doesn't become a motion for reconsideration at some point in time. It's all facts and circumstances driven, I think.
Mr. Veen?
Just to add, I was here in the 80s, and I believe that was the last time it was redone. And I remember going through, being around when we went through that item by item back in, at that point in time. So it definitely proves a point. It's been a long time since we've redone this. I don't think it's been done since then, so.
Right. I would agree. And my last point is, item 31, Robert's Rules of Order. Yes, Mr. Gosted? I know, I'm right on task. This is what we're talking about. Processes, processes related to how the budget, or the agendas are set. This is part of the process. We need to understand the.
No, and my only comment was, as we're dealing with particular ordinances in my office, I've instructed Mr. Quinn and Ms. Broaddon, who's associate, that if they see something that needs to be identified, that they think might need to be changed, we are keeping a list of those things. We haven't presented it yet. One of the reasons, I wanted the legislative session to be done, in case there were some changes that need to be made based upon statutory changes. But we are compiling that type of list, and I guess I'm going to be taking a look at two dash, whatever the section of ordinance code is here, two dash zero one oh four, in a little bit more detail now, given tonight's discussion.
I think, I think, I did want to point out one last thing, under 31, Robert's Rules of Order, and any question or procedure not covered herein, which leads me to the memorandum that you sent related to the motion to table versus a motion to postpone. Although technically, according to Robert's Rules of Order, you are correct. In 100% practice, in the last 11 years on the council, a motion to table has been accepted and moved as, essentially and synonymously with a motion to postpone. And so, Robert's Rules of Order, as you know, are old English rules that have been brought to the United States and that have evolved considerably over time. We just haven't, whoever printed Robert's Rules hasn't updated the rules. So now to say that Robert's Rules says that we have to move to postpone, I beg to differ. We've been following the motion to, to table in practice here, long before I was on the council. And so, I think that's something that, in general, I don't know how other people on the council feel about that, but the, in practice, we've been moving to table for years. And I believe similar, Mr. Weber, to when a council member has asked to add something to the agenda, when someone moves to table, it's been accepted as a courtesy so that we can move on. I don't, I for one, don't think that today, we should be using Robert's Rules of Order to, as a gotcha, aha moment. It should be, that's the way it was done, according to the rules, but we, we in practicality have been doing it this way. We should be able to do it any way we want to. But that's my opinion. So, next time I move to table, if anyone has a problem with it, they should speak up. Great. Any other comments for the good of the order? Moving right along, item 2.2. If I can get my.
2.2, I can read it for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Current process for nominating citizens to Ground Force Boards and potential changes to city code to adjust the process.
Great. City staff, again, provided us with a 26-page document that has all of the, we've seen this, is this the exact document we've seen in the past? Or is this document updated with the city code related to the, to the appointments?
It's, you've seen that before. We've further perfected it.
Yeah. No, it's great. It's very easy to follow. And again, if, Mr. Gosted, if you and your staff were the ones that did the highlighting and made things very, very easy for us, and so I very much appreciate that. The, I think I'll, I'll open it up to the council for comments related to the current process for making appointments to committees. Does anyone have any comments to start us? Okay, then I'll make a comment. Mr. Veen, you have a comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I looked at the, I think, the earlier version from last summer, I think, the 2020 version of this. So I think you've updated, didn't you say? So it's got a little bit of difference, but I found it kind of interesting as I looked at them, that, as I counted it earlier today, there's 28 committees or board nominations or appointments that are made. And there's kind of a really vast array of how people are put on committees. So, I spent some time, those that are nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the city council are 18. And 10 of those are just citizens. You know, they could be, I don't know, the plumbing board or whatever, where we bring people in on that. And then, eight of those that were nominated by the mayor, confirmed by the council, are committee, again, committee citizens nominated by the mayor, but then there are also council members on them, okay? And then, so, five of the, of the council, or the council members are nominated by the mayor. One is nominated by the city council president. And two of them are just appointed by the city council. So I don't quite know how we go from nominated to appointed, but we have that. Then, we have the city council member nominated by the city council president and confirmed by the city council. There's one of those. There is the city council member that is appointed by the city council, again. Two of those appointed directly by the mayor that don't go back to the city council. There's four. There are city council members appointed by the mayor, two, and then the city council established via ordinance, there's one that established. It's, what I'm just seeing is, it's kind of a little bit all over the place about how and when and who, and, because right now, a majority of them, and I think that was the intent, was going to be nominated by the mayor through a process that we've, we've talked about, and confirmed by the city council. And I just wanted to bring that up, is that if there's one thing that I guess I've seen so far, it might be worthy of taking a step back and look at this as a general methodology about how we go about doing this, is probably what I was, was going to say. That isn't anything about changing ordinances or doing anything along that matter. So I wanted to at least bring that up in, as a general comment about what's, what I've seen here.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Are there any more general comments? I'll make a general comment. I agree with Mr. Veen. It's very interesting how the city code is written on these appointments. Obviously, they were done over time, and perhaps the city attorney or whomever drafted each one didn't look at the previous appointments that were drafted and use similar language. I find it, for example, I can't, there aren't page numbers on this, but for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, I find this one good. The appointment, "The commission members shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council." I don't think Mayor Brown one time asked me for my advice on this Historic Preservation Commission, but, but that doesn't mean he wasn't asking others for advice. I just find, I find that odd, right? That's the only one that it actually says, "Through advice and consent." I like the spirit of that concept, but I don't know what constitutes advice or seeking advice. I don't, I'm sure there probably isn't a legal term for that either. Is there, Mr. Gosted?
As I was preparing for tonight's meeting, I went through these, my associate put together all this for the council with respect to the committees. I do want to point out, we missed one, the health board. There's a, that's appointed by, by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. But I did see that the, the language about advice and consent, confirmed, approved. I think there was some language. I think the intent behind all that is, the mayor shepherds forward somebody that they want, he or she may want on the, on the particular board, and it's voted on by city council. I think that's the intent. But I don't know what advice and consent would be versus what the distinction is between that and confirmed. But if you're going to clean things up, that would be something you'd clean up, to use consistent language throughout the, your ordinances.
Any other, are there other comments? Mr. Weber?
President Sandy, thank you. Special committees, is, does the council have the authority to establish special committees?
To establish, excuse me, to establish special committees? I believe they do, under their, and again, in anticipation of tonight's meeting. I think it's under the Home Rule Charter, that you can provide city officers, agencies, and employees, and to provide change or creation of a form of structure of government, including its governing body, executive officers, and city officials. So I think the city council, through ordinances, can, can establish the special.
And the mayor's role in that?
To establish the special?
For the council to establish a special committee. The mayor has no role in that.
Well, it's, it would be an ordinance provision if they were going to create a special committee. I think you'd, you'd create a committee and you'd do it through an ordinance process, I believe, if you were going to do that. If it was just going to be a short-lived committee, I do believe that the mayor might be able to establish a committee if need be. But I'm not sure what, what authority that commission would have to make decisions. Obviously, it would be something for, like an information gathering type of committee that could then present it to the city council for whatever action might be needed from that committee.
And in the past, there have been blue-ribbon commissions created. I'm guessing those would fall under the special committee area?
Probably. I didn't look at that particular topic for tonight's meeting.
What if, what if the council wanted to create a subcommittee of council members to review the committee appointments and the process and the language, to make recommendations to the council of how we can make it more uniform based upon, from one appointment to the next?
One thing you'd be careful about doing that is that committee becomes also a subject to the open meeting laws, and you have to notice it up. And you probably have a ton of special meetings, because you probably haven't scheduled meeting times for that special committee.
Certainly, yeah. Anyone else have any additional thoughts? Ms. Dockler, any thoughts on this item?
You're reading my mind, President Sandy. I was just unmuting. I think the biggest thing that I have when it comes to board appointments and committee appointments truly is just collaboration. I think, just my own experience, serving on differing kinds of boards, whether it is nonprofit or for-profit, whether it was governing or advisory, it really is important for the board, in whatever role it is that they're playing or tasked with, to support the agency that they're representing or entity. They really need to have strong connections. And I do understand that the mayor is able to, you know, choose appointments and then recommend them to the city council for appointment. However, I do think that the collaboration piece is what is key there, especially if you're not as familiar with a certain board or whatever it is that's currently going on for them. I certainly don't know what every committee is doing or what their current makeup is, but I do think that it would behoove everyone involved to make sure that conversations are happening, to know what kind of expertise would help fill any gaps that currently are on, exist on a board, especially if you're seeing old members kind of cycling out, whether that's because terms have expired, or because they themselves are stepping off to follow some new opportunities in their life. But I do think that that is really, really important. And I think that it can, in the future, really help some of these conversations go a bit more smoothly, but also make it so it is a more cohesive chain of leadership for the different organizations, entities, and things that they are responsible for.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Any, any other comments? Mr. Veen?
I'll add just a couple last minute comments. I don't think that the process we have has any major issues with it, but I think there's some couple, couple of tweaks that I think would help. And part of it is because of what we've gone through. I meant, I went through those boards earlier. For those boards that have council members, my recommendation, and it's just a recommendation, is that when there's a city council person that's also on the board, that the mayor consult with the city council person who knows the board well. Not that we're telling them what decision to make, but we would do that. And then, in, in the confirmation process that the city council goes through, I would like to, I've, I've been at fault here, because oftentimes I rubber stamp without really knowing. I'd be really, be honest with you. And it would be nice if we had something to know about the applicant's resume, and maybe some type of report for why they feel that, why the mayor feels that that's the best applicant, instead of us having to bring somebody up and ask questions and start getting into a lot of personal detail. I'm wondering if, again, those are just recommendations that I think would make it maybe move smoother and keep us more informed about the person themselves, because we may not see it, we just see the name when it comes through for council approval. And I think we mostly just blanketed, approved that, thinking that due diligence has been done. And I'm not saying it's not been done, but I know we've had some questions recently, and maybe that would help alleviate that. So, just my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Shukwami, comments?
So I'd like to echo what, what Mr. Veen said. I think that if there's a council person that serves, they probably have a good perspective to add, not necessarily stating that anyone has to listen to that perspective, but maybe that that perspective could be invited to the table. I think if repeatedly the council members all wanted perspective given and it wasn't received, that there probably would be a policy change. So rather than having a policy change, maybe we just ask for perspective to be given, and hopefully that, that works. I haven't been in that situation, so I can't speak to that, but I like that. Mr. Veen?
Yeah, the one thing I'd like to say, like I say, or at least I've understood about Mayor Bocinski, he is meeting with people and having discussions with them. I'm not sure that always happened in the past. So, he. So he is in a better position in this case to be able to answer those questions as much as, as others maybe have. I do know, you know, there's been times where some committees, you know, have, have or maybe desire to do their own interviews, but when it's an actual mayor appointee. And I think this keeps it consistent to do this, what we've just talked about.
Mr. Weber, your lights on? Anything to add, sir?
I'd like to add something, but I'll defer to the mayor. Mayor?
Yes, sir. President Sandy, I think, you know, I think it's a, it's a really good idea as long as the, the participation is there and, you know, people have the opportunity when these appointments are placed to, you know, to guide people where to go, how to apply. But I do think if council members are going to be involved in that process, they do have to take some time to be involved and just not, you know, kind of show up at the end and then say, well, you know, without doing the work, I don't really, you know, I don't want that person, I want this person. So as long as they're, you know, willing to be engaged, at least some of the, maybe they don't need to be there for the whole thing, but some of the process, you know, then that's totally fine. I mean, love to take advice, but I think that there has to be that commitment then by the council members to at least put some, you know, time into it as well, so.
Seems reasonable, mayor, as long as you're letting people know when you're doing interviews and those sorts of things, I think we probably would all be willing to, assuming we have time. It's an interesting comment. I'm not for sure we want to be on, on all the interviews either. I'm not for sure we're trying to get into it that deep, but we may still have some advice. And it may vary depending on which one we're talking about. But that wasn't my original intent when I said that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Well, Mr. Gosted brings up, as he's always, you know, speaking on open meetings, so you ought to, he's got a comment on that, so why don't you just tell him directly, because I'll screw it up.
Again, it, it goes back to the open meeting laws and once you start gathering three or four of you or even deemed to be a committee, a interview committee, that's an open, that's a meeting that needs to be noticed up for the public to participate in those interviews. So just want to remind the, the council that if you, if, if one of you shows up at a, at a commission, or excuse me, an interview, you know, that's fine, that directive or anything like that, but if, if all of a sudden there is the same folks and, and that are showing up for those, those interviews or where we've created a committee or we've directed to council members, even two, to show up at these interviews, it's a committee. There is in fact an example in the Attorney General's Manual on Open Meetings about that very topic in a school district, having teachers interview potential candidates for teaching positions and that being deemed to be a open, subject to the open meeting laws.
But Mr. Gosted, just to confirm, so that there isn't any ambiguity here, Mr. Veen could show up when the mayor is interviewing for planning and zoning. Mr. Weber can show up when the mayor is interviewing for the housing authority. Mr. Weigl can show up when he's interviewing for emergency management and 911 authority, correct? When those aren't subject to open meetings.
I would agree that that's, that's likely not going to be, that would not be subject to an open meeting law.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weber, a comment?
Yeah, I'm not seeing the, the direct relevance of the open meeting laws for the committees that I'm looking at because of the limited number. So for the mayor to reach out and invite a council member who sits on a commission to weigh in on that, then it would be up to the council member. Beyond that, and, and I don't mean for this in any way to contradict what Ms. Dokler, Mr. Veen, or Mr. Kavami have said, or what the mayor said. This is a larger issue for, for down the road, but we're asking an awful lot of our mayor these days, a part-time mayor. We have a part-time mayor for another three years. At some point, what would be, at what point do we begin a discussion about the need to transfer to a full-time mayor? There's a lot of work here. I think in the past, we've looked to a full-time city administrator and a part-time mayor, but with all the economic development that's occurring in our city, Grand Forks, Inc. is becoming a more complex operation. So I'd just throw that out as a general concept for, for future consideration.
Any comments? Yes, Mr. Weigl?
I'd just say one thing. I think, I think this is a two-way street as well. I think we need to be proactive as council members as well to reach out to the mayor and Todd and everybody else involved with these committees. When we feel that there's an appointment coming up that, like myself, maybe it's emergency management, something I know a little bit about, that we're reaching out to him as well and the staff to make sure that we, if we have a perspective or we want to be involved, that we're making that connection and not solely just relying on him to, to give us a call as well.
Sure, can't argue that. I think to address the elephant in the room, the, the appointment of Ms. Ronkowski didn't hit the city's website until, to the best of my recollection, when I got the email, it was about 1:30 Monday afternoon. I didn't know that the mayor was interviewing people for the library board and essentially as soon as I read it, I picked up the phone and called him. And so as soon as I found out and had a personal issue with that appointment, I did reach out and for one reason or another, the mayor's decided to, to continue to move that person forward and that's fine. He has that prerogative and at some point, I presume, we'll, we'll vote either, either up or down, but it's our responsibility to vet the people that the mayor is bringing forward. It is not a, I don't think any of us want or believe that these appointments should be a rubber stamp for the mayor. We have the, the responsibility to do due diligence. And so my sincere apologies to Ms. Ronkowski, because I had no intention for any of this to be on television or in the newspaper or on social media. I certainly wasn't expected to personally find myself being called a liar on social media by trolls that live in Vemidji. That's, it's neither here nor there. I don't have time for it, I don't have patience for it. People that know me know my record and I'm quite sure the people that understand, understand and know my record know that I have no reason to lie about things like this, because these are inconsequential in the terms of things that are significant city business. The appointment to the library board is very important to, to our community, but it's not so important that I would start lying about, about the people that are involved in, in the issue. And so I, again, I apologize to Ms. Ronkowski publicly. I'm sorry that this has been turned into something that it wasn't intended to be.
Mr. Weber?
On that note, this does go back to Ms. Dokler's request to review this process back in, I think, December. And now it's, it's the end of March before we're actually discussing it. Something got dropped there along the way, because she did request this, this review and it's taken us a few months. And then there were other appointments between that, that request and this, this next appointment to the commission or committee. What is the library board? The library board?
The library, they're a board, Board of Directors, yeah. So any action items? I, for one, think that the city council or members of the city council shouldn't be involved in a thorough review of city code related to the appointments. And some, I'd think a small group of council members should be part of that review and should make recommendations to the city council as to any changes we would want to. And I foresee it as a, I don't know if I'd call it a consolidation, more of making it uniform so that it's more logical and easier. In that way, we're not questioning every single appointment of who's responsible for what and when and why and so on. Yes, Mr. Weber?
President Sandy, a question for Mr. Gosted. If, if it was three council members on that committee, does that become, does that fall under open meeting requirements?
I think if, if the council directs those three people to show up at an interview, I believe that's a committee of the city council and I believe that's an open meeting requirement.
I, I see no reason why this shouldn't, that, that concept shouldn't be open. I don't see any reason. It doesn't necessarily have to be televised. It could be four Wednesdays in a row at noon, for example, downstairs and people are invited, we notice it and people are invited, correct? Mr. Gosted?
Yeah, I don't think there's any requirement that you televise, but you got to provide notice to, and not, not only to the newspaper, but also to anybody that might request those notices. You have to provide them notice of the meeting as well.
So not in Vemidji?
If he requests to be noticed, you have to provide him notice of the meeting.
We can send him an email. There's no problem with that. He's welcome to show up a little tour. Mr. Veen? No, I, I think we, I have no problem making it into official meeting, letting people come, the public come, have, have that discussion. But, Mr. Gosted, I wanted to understand a little bit, for a quorum, you need to have, will you explain to me what the definition of a quorum is?
More than 50% of the voting members of the governing body, so here with seven council members, it would be four.
Four, but three would not be a quorum?
It is not a quorum, but if it's, if you create a committee, that committee is, is still subject to the open meeting laws.
Got you. So I don't know if we need to decide tonight, the members of that group. If people are interested in being part of that, why don't you send me an email individually and then we can try to come up with, I think three members would make sense. Does everybody, Mr. Veen? I would just simply say, I just ask the president to, to make nominations for whoever you want to put on the committee. We could, should certainly contact you, but you're pretty good at helping people decide what we want to.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. I will certainly take personal nominations, however. Mr. Weigl, comment?
My question is, do we need a committee for that?
I would contend that it's going to, it'd probably take more than one. Unless people want to go for a marathon for a couple four-hour meetings to talk through all of this, I would think that, that you would want multiple one-hour meetings so that you don't have to kill all that duration of time.
And maybe, maybe I missed it, President Sandy. Can you tell me what this committee is for? I may have gossed off for a second or two.
My thought process is to, for the committee to review the current processes, the current individual, and perhaps you're right, maybe this is, maybe it's less than what I'm thinking it is, but ultimately, I'm hoping that the committee of three would visit with the city attorney, the city attorney, and you would walk through each one of the appointment processes and pick out the good and the bad and try to whittle it down into, here's what we like from this and here's what we like from that and here's what we like from this and here is the set of parameters that we believe would make sense. And then that would be brought as a, an agenda item to a future committee of the whole for, as a recommendation to the city council for changes to the city code.
So really, what we're, we're doing is just cleaning stuff up?
Yeah, I would think so, yes.
I'll volunteer for that committee.
Okay, great, duly noted.
President Sandy, I also would volunteer for that committee. And I, if I may, I do think that this is in a similar movement that we are just making in general for some other committees or working groups that we have talked about, looking at alcohol ordinance policies for Grand Forks, looking at rental housing in Grand Forks. I think that this is just something that we have naturally started to do and I don't think it's a bad thing. I don't think it's a bad thing to go back and look at our policy, because over time you develop them, but it also means that the wording, like you had indicated earlier, doesn't always flow the way that it should or it becomes circuitous and it needs to be cleaned up to be more understandable. So I, I think this is good and I think that this is probably something we need to do moving forward, but biting off small chunks of it at a time is certainly much more doable.
Thank you, Ms. Dokler. Any other comments related to item 2.2?
I'd nominate Dana to be on that, or President Sandy to be on that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. We'll see if anyone else is interested in being involved as well.
Moving right on, economic development issues, unless somebody else had any other comment?
Yes, Mr. Weber?
I, Mr. Veen, I would hope that Mr. Veen would be part of that process as well. He's thought long about this.
I would agree, yes. Item 2.3, economic development issues, system or set process for issuing city investment and equality of life features that may include arts, park, recreation facilities and facilities like children's museums or BMX tracks or things like that. I think the consensus from the council was not necessarily that we have to have a firm process for this. I think it was more, what, what is the process we're currently using and do we think we should have a, a set process moving forward and/or if that's the case, how are we going to put that process together and, and who's going to decide what the process is? So I'll open it up for comments if people have general comments related to this, of course. Ms. Mock is the one that eloquently wrote this process down in, on, in her email to me. And of course, I wish her all the well and hope she's feeling better soon. Any, any thoughts on this? Mr. Weigl?
I think what we need to do is, I mean, I think we empower our community. I think a lot of these things that can come forward come from, from everyday citizens. I think you look at things like parks and arts and recreations and facilities, a lot of these things are people, things people are already involved in, you know, especially people with younger children. So I, I think there's a lot of potential there. I think the city involvement or park district involvement helps put some of these projects that are simply an idea, puts them on the map as something that can actually be accomplished. So I think the more we involve our community, the better off we're going to be with, with some of these and bringing some of them forward and actually getting them done.
Mr. Weber, follow on to that?
Thank you, President Sandy. Yeah, the BMX group that came forward tonight was a great example of what you're talking about, but is it enough to, I don't know how we encourage that. They, they seem to have been a grassroots development that came forward on their own. Maybe there were, was more going on behind the scenes that I wasn't aware of, but in terms of a, a system or set process for issuing city investment in something like that, that was bottom up and this seems to be asking for a top-down approach to it. And I, I think that you ideally would have a combination of the two. But this question goes more to the, the top-down. Your suggestion is how does that top-down nurture the, the bottom-up? Now I'm just saying top-down and bottom-up over and over again.
I, can I interject a thought? Because of the BMX and the other things in the strategic plan, so first of all, thanks to the mayor and city staff for putting together their 2020 initiatives, they, they emailed us their thought process and it's great. It's heavily focused on economic development, which is certainly, I, should be a priority of our community. And I'm glad that city administration has said that it's a, it's a significant priority for the city. It makes perfect sense and, and I think the mayor and Todd are doing a great job of leading that conversation. I, one of, sense that I wanted to get from the council is related to the Alaric Center property itself. The, the Alaric Center using tax dollars and its long-term capital improvement budget purchased, purchased the land. And I, I don't know if all of you know this, but I'll say it again for the 1,000,000th time. I'm very worried about the long-term financial health of our most important asset, our most expensive asset that the city owns, well, perhaps the new water treatment plant too. The second most expensive asset we own, sitting out on 42nd Street, we need to have a long-term plan for capital improvements. We've got funding for operations and hopefully the football team continues to win and that helps with operations as well, but when the $4 to $5 million roof needs to be replaced, you have to have the money to pay for it. We're, we're going to be, somebody's going to be coming back asking the taxpayers for significant sums of money. So I'm, I'm all for economic development and I think it's really important, because it's important to help groups like the BMX folks, because they can't afford to buy that land, right? But, but on the other hand... But on the other hand, the Alara Center needs the money, so I'm trying to figure out how we manage, we manage that in general. I think that, on the one hand, helping the soccer club with land for a facility, I think it's great. I'd love to see them go out and fundraise, and figure out how to come up with $6 to $8 million, and build indoor turf, because everyone knows, the park district's been touting it, I think administration's been saying it, we need indoor space for kids, and whatever, we know we need it in our community, but when you start talking about the grassroots efforts, Mr. Weber, where you wanna nurture those groups, trying to saddle them with another $2.5 million on the cost of their project, you know, when you're adding 30% to the total cost, I mean, things become very difficult for those groups to manage. I know that we, for example, the city got stimulus money that we need to use, I was thinking that maybe the city with stimulus money could buy the land from the Alara Center, and then we could use it to, but there are so many people, there are so many places we need to use that stimulus money, that I'm not sure that that's a great idea either. I know the mayor brought up a good idea to me earlier, I don't know, Mayor, if you wanna, you wanna share that, you've been talking about 2163 and 5996 for a while.
Yeah, well, I think, first of all, you know, we don't have the guarantee yet that that money's coming, and we don't have the exact strings, so I'll throw that caveat out, but I'd like to see that money used for sort of these one-time economic development quality-of-life plays, so I'd like to see, you know, a portion of that money go, and we can set up a system, however that may be, but to maybe seed fund some of these things, like a children's museum, so maybe it pays for that first 20%, you know, indoor turf facility, an outdoor play park, an aquatic center, make that money available, so they've got that seed funding to start. And then when it comes to the, you know, the Alara Center, so, you know, President Sandy is, you know, is correct, the Alara, I think that'd be a great place to do it, but with about $11.3 million, we could really have four or five big projects that we could start by funding 20% of, and then let these groups be able to find the rest of the funding, great public-private partnership. The land would be great, it'd be a great place to use it, but like you said, I mean, the Alara Center used their capital funds to buy that land, and now it's sitting in the city's name, so I do think there needs to be a long-term plan to start paying that back, because it would be great to be able to offer the land and, you know, a couple million dollars for one of these projects to get off the ground, it'd really be a game-changer for the city. So I think there's a way that we could have some sort of long-term payment, whether it's through the growth fund, or, you know, a change in the funding proportion from the one cent sales tax, but I think there's options, but it's something I'd really like the board to consider, or the council to consider, using that money for these one-time projects, so that we can look back and say, you know, we took that money and really made game-changing investments that are great for our children in the community. So, if you are okay with it, I'll start preparing kind of a general thoughts, and you guys can look at it, and certainly, just the initial edit of it, and let you guys, you know, do what you wish with it, but it'll be a start, and go from there, if, you know, if we've got at least general consensus to look at that. And the places don't necessarily have to be at that place, at the Alara Center, I just think it's one place where we can expand and have a real magnet in the town, that's not in the south end, it's not in the north end, it's right there on the freeway with access to everybody, so kinda everyone has access to it, but, so, kind of a lot to chew on, but there you go.
Wouldn't it be great if we had all sorts of groups clamoring to get their hands on a portion of those funds, because they're doing big, exciting things for our community, right? I think it's a great concept, Mayor, and I appreciate you sharing that with me earlier. Mr. Weigl, did you have a comment?
I would agree with what you said, and what Mayor Bochensky said, I think it's great. This isn't uncommon to see, I think we're seeing it all over the state. When you talk about something like BMX, I, Sandy, Minnesota, their city government invested over $5 million in an indoor track and facility, something indoors that can be used year-round for the youth of their community, so I think some communities are pretty far ahead in investing in infrastructure like this, and I'd love to see Grand Forks add its name to that list of investing in the youth of our community, so that they can do things year-round, and that they have opportunities year-round, instead of just May through September.
Mr. Dorst, had a comment?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we, number one, as Mayor Bochensky said, we don't have the funds yet, and the first half would come in 60 days, with the second half a year later. We're still waiting on specific guidance for how those eligible uses can be used from the US Treasury, so, just so you know, it's part of the conversation, but I don't have specific guidance on the use of those funds yet. It may be something related to these, where it's more money for water-sewer infrastructure, not the, you know, so anyway, how it can be used is still, we still need specific guidance on that.
Mr. Vean, comment?
Yeah, I think, I'd like the conversation so far, I think we've talked about it in the past, and the statement was, public-private partnerships are probably the future of the city, and it's gonna take public monies, and people are gonna have to understand it. I think the TIFs were a perfect example of where public-private partnerships will move us forward, because I think we need to focus on growth, that's what the mayor has talked about, I think it's a great idea, because if we're not growing, it feels like we're dying, and we don't wanna do that. We need to focus on growth, and putting money in the way that enhance quality of life, along with economic help to get things moving. We talked, you talked about the Alara Center, and we do know, I mean, not to make excuses, but had we not had the COVID-2020, it was probably gonna be the best year we ever had. It was, we were in line for long-term to be able, to be much more self-sufficient than we are. It's, the truth is, we've gotta figure some things out. That building is 20-some years old, but if you look at it, people that come there would never know the age of it, because it's been maintained, and it's still, it's still a jewel, I think, for the community, because I couldn't imagine us not having that, for what we get out of it, but we're gonna have to figure out a way to make sure that it continues to be viable, and it's competitive, that we keep bringing some of these things back, because there's just no other choice, we've gotta do that. So we've got a whole array of things that we could be talking about, each one of them are valuable to the citizens, because they do impact the quality of life, they do bring people to our community, they spend money, all the different things that come with that.
And I think, going back to what Mr. Schill mentioned earlier, with the young families and the growth in young families in our community, especially working to, you know, the efforts of economic development, the mayor, the council, previous mayor, trying to grow high-tech jobs, growing Grand Sky, growing the technology incubator here in, both at the Center for Innovation, as well as in the Alara Center, I think it's, the people that we're trying to attract for those jobs are younger people that have young families, and so having more amenities, over and over again, I'm hearing from, you know, for years I've heard from folks that are trying to attract people to Grand Forks, that right away, it's a non-starter for folks in California, or whatever, but being able to say, hey, why don't you just come on up and check us out, and then being able to tout all of the amenities that we have, I think every, everything that we add, adds to the chances that we will continue to grow those technology sectors and those jobs in our community. Mr. Kavami?
So I agree with all those comments that we've heard so far, I agree with the ideas and how we're gonna use this current funding. You know, I look at the question of what's our system or set of processes to handle this going forward, and I think of how successful the growth fund is, and how that can be a grassroots effort, where it's one business owner trying to get it going, trying to move it forward, and if we fast-forward two years from now, and we've spent this money, and we've had this huge success, but there's other entities that need to access the praxis reports, or need to access the studies on what parts of the market we're missing, you know, where do we send them? And I guess that's where I think, when I look at this question, it's, is that something where that's a growth fund function, where if someone says, I've got this idea, I went and did the research, and this is how it'll, this is where I'll go, and this is my path forward, and I just need some help getting all the information that's available, how does that happen now? You know, the BMX group was able to connect the dots, and you saw the product that they presented, you know, I just think of, what's two years from now? We're out of this money, we spent it, it's awesome, how do we keep it going? And what's that entity?
Mr. Weber?
Thank you, President Sandy. First, a very quick tangent, I think it's just great to have a conversation like this. Hopefully, we'll have them more often, as I think has been very productive and useful. To build on what Mr. Kavami has just said, as another member of the Growth Fund Committee, the Growth Fund Committee is currently looking at its portfolio, a portfolio that's been growing for years. 2163 is our economic development fund, it's replenished on an ongoing basis. 5996, the growth fund, the Jobs Development Authority, that is intended for a revolving loan fund. The intent is for those monies to be loaned and then paid back, but as we're looking at our portfolio, we're considering different possibilities, such as a percentage of that portfolio being used for higher-risk, high-tech investments, to attract that kind of business. I wonder if the Growth Fund Committee might be, might look at the possibility of a one-time use of some of that war chest that's developed over the years, to supplement the federal money that's probably coming, and to make this whole idea even more significant, in terms of the city's role in developing high-quality life features that may include arts parks, recreation facilities like children's museums, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and to Marine's, you know, point about, you know, not knowing exactly what the strings are, and there, you know, there may be some options, using the growth fund in that matter, and having some of these funds, you know, rerouted somewhere else, where those buckets, then they become, the money doesn't have the strings attached as much, you know, so if you have other options, where you can spend the money, money that was gonna go there, now has less strings attached, so it might need to be nuanced a little bit, let's just say, with the stimulus funding, you know, depending upon what strings are attached. It seems to be the federal government has just kind of been loosening the strings so much on a lot of this, that hopefully, that's helpful, because that's what would really, really help the community, but we'll be in a wait-and-see mode.
Yeah, Mr. Kavami, I honestly don't know the answer to your question, right? I know it was as much a rhetorical question as any, but I don't know how the city comes up with a very specific, if we want a specific process, I'm not sure. I think the growth fund is certainly a good place to start, but I think Mr. Brooks is our, kind of our business development arm for the city these days, correct, Mr. Brooks? Yeah, see, so perhaps getting, letting people know that going to the planning department is a great place to start, because certainly, Mr. Brooks knows property in our community, he knows who the players are, he knows where to route things, and so maybe that would be, you know, advertising that as an option would be good for our community as well. Yeah, Mr. Fieland?
I think if we could have more conversations about these things, that, whether they're community holes, I think really the strength of the administration working with you is to really call us on these ideas, and so I think that'd be, we've tried to get to where we're more strategic in working on things like this, so if we can get that, as opposed to approving perfunctory things, and I think the one thing that Councilmember Weber talked about, top-down, bottom-up, it's gotta be both, and the strength of, as I told these BMX folks, the reason why it got approved is because they wanted it to happen, right? It was as successful as it was because it was top-down, we helped facilitate to get here. If I would have brought in, well, I think we should do BMX on that a lot, I think it's a great idea, you would probably question, where the heck did this come from? Because it came from the bottom-up, we helped facilitate administratively, it became a success, and what we're trying to do as a city of Grand Forks is, we're supposed to be here to facilitate objective processes, and so that's what we're trying to do with this, because all these groups, we've tried to combine them, because they all have the people they wanna work with, okay? And so what we're trying to do is deliver this facilitative map that individual groups can move forward with, and still work with their folks, so that's, I think it's gotta be bottom-up, top-down, and I think if we can have more conversations like BMX, and with, because I've been in the city for too long, where groups worked in their own silo, like this turf group, while other cities have built multiple facilities, they've been wanting to cling on to their concept, and all we're trying to do from them is, let's just get to victory, and we've been spinning our wheels too much, and so, let's have this as an inspiration, it's not either one, it's both, and from that success, if we can bring more to it. My only concern is, they all have these interests, you guys know that, you guys work on individual projects, I just want victory, on behalf of the mayor and the citizens of Grand Forks, and get these across the finish line.
Any other comments related to this topic? And Mr. Weber?
I'd like to segue to 2.4, because I think there's some ties to what we've just been discussing.
Certainly. Would you wanna read it in, Mr. Dorst?
Okay, 2.4 is the redevelopment strategies for areas of town that may need reinvestment, such as large retail stores that have gone under and are sitting vacant.
Mr. Weber?
There are some strong parallels between these two, and one key component is the potential role for the city in both, and in terms of redevelopment strategies for areas of town that may need reinvestment, let's, perhaps we could take the mall as an example. The current owners of the mall own various malls around the country, retail is in flux around the country, around the world, so we are one of many concerns. I don't wanna suggest that we're not a concern of theirs, but we're one of many of their concerns, and they don't know our community as well as we do. Currently, we have a chamber of commerce to work on some of the issues related to this concern, but it is a membership-driven organization that inevitably is going to serve its current members, which may not always be consistent with bringing in competition, but the chamber has been an important and tremendously useful, beneficial partner in this process. Similarly, we have the Economic Development Corporation, that understands how all of these things drive primary sector development, that workforce, in a moment, we're gonna be talking about childcare, how workforce development, childcare, events and activities in our community, all of those relate to primary sector. However, the EDC's mission is first and foremost, primary sector, not redevelopment strategies for areas of town that may need reinvestment, like the Columbia Mall. So, I believe that the city, likely through the JDA, has an important role to play in these redevelopment strategies, and not just in terms of setting policy, but in a more active manner, possibly with the hiring of a staff, and Mr. Brooks is currently doing some of this work, but he's already got a great deal on his plate, and we can only ask him to keep adding more and more, you know, there's a limit to how much more we can add to his list of responsibilities. I think it's, this offers us one more opportunity to consider the possibility of bringing in a staff person to do this, somehow coordinated with the chamber, with the EDC, and the city government, through the JDA.
Is that a motion, Mr. Weber? You can make a motion. I don't think we can actually act on that.
I don't know that it's sufficiently well-articulated, but I guess I could make a motion that we look at that in greater detail, so that a more fully articulated proposal could come forward.
And ask to put that on a future agenda. I'd second that. Yeah, I agree. And it may be more than one, to be honest with you, it could be the best money we spend is what we do in this area, and we've talked about before, it's been around the discussions, so. I would, before we vote on that, I'll add my opinion, I think that if we're going to do that, we need to set that person up for success, and to me, we should have measurable goals, but again, not with the intention of scrutiny, but as much as to show success and be able to provide feedback for the of scrutiny, but as much as to, to show success and be able to provide feedback for the person so that they know that they're being successful. And certainly, I mean, no ill-will towards Mr. Brooks, but Mr. Brooks isn't a salesman, and what we need for somebody in that position is a salesman, somebody, or gal, somebody that can go out and sell Grand Forks to prospective businesses and/or that is on the, boots-on-the-ground, making phone calls, trying to drum business, talking to Mr. Schill, getting all the information from Praxis Strategies, our surveys and, and all of our data. We need somebody, if we're going to do that, we need somebody that's a hustler, who's in sales and understands sales, because we need to sell our community. And so for me, I'd rather, I'd like to see that person, if we have that person, I'd like to see that person surrounded by other people that do a similar job, that are out trying to advocate and sell our community, and so for me, that position should be situated in the Economic Development Corporation across the street, because that's what Keith, that's what Brandon, that's what Nate, that's what they do on a daily basis, and so just having people around to bounce ideas off of and those sorts of things, I think that's how helps set you up for success. So although I'm not saying that I won't support the position if we decide that the position should be in the mayor's office, I'm not saying I won't, I just believe you're better off giving that person all the tools that they need to be successful. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Well, I think first of all, we have to realize that to get that level of talent, it's going to be an expensive position, and we have to make sure we set the parameters so that it's, it is different than the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce currently, and then of course, where is it housed and who does the person answer to? I think those are, you know, really the questions to answer, but, you know, I don't see any reason why that couldn't be housed at the EDC if that makes sense, or, you know, I would be confused of where their position would lie within the city. If they wanted to be, you know, under administration, or part of community development, or planning, you know, you'd have to make that distinction and then who they answer to, but as to the person, it has to be like Dana, or President Sandy said, that let's make sure we get the right skill level with the, you know, the energy, the attitude, and those aren't cheap, having a salesperson that can go out there and get it done. We can't just, you know, throw someone fresh out of college and just say, here, run with the ball. It's, it's not fair to them to, to set them up, so just keep that in mind, that, you know, in order to get this position, it's probably, make sure we set enough money aside for it, and make sure that we are well-supported, like, like what was stated, so.
I think Mr. Vean was right, though, this, this could be the best money that the city spends. Any other, any other comments on that topic and the motion on the floor?
Yes, Mr. Cavami?
Just, I agree that it could be money well-spent, but I also get nervous at any additional staff. So just, just so I can get that out there for the public, I think that, that for me to support it, which I, which I probably would, I just, I'd like to see some structure. As someone that's in sales and understands that world, it's structure, you need some sort of structure to measure the success, and without really defined structure, I, I fear wasting money, and I don't want to waste taxpayer money, that's all.
Excellent.
Council President Sandy, I think it should always have a tie to the city administration and the city council, because ultimately, everything that happens comes through the city of Grand Forks, so I think, and I think the other part is, when people want to get something done in the community, they go to the, the mayor's is first, and so there's got to be a strong tie to the city of Grand Forks, because ultimately, we're going to be responsible, and certainly, we want a strong and sales force, but ultimately, they're just selling the product, we have to be responsible for it at the end of the day, and just, if you talk about the Columbia Mall and all those things, those are conversations that we're having currently, and hopefully we can deliver some great projects, just like we delivered for those other projects previously, so I think let's never underestimate the skill and ability of our city of Grand Forks to at least be a really strategic partner at the end of the day on projects like that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Dockler?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Vean?
You know, I, I don't want to stretch this out any longer, so I hesitated to say anything, but, you know, we've talked a little bit, all of this gets to about, should the city have a higher-level strategic plan that fits so much of what we're talking about, because it's a little bit hard to do it all, but if we could find the five, three top things that we can do, we should stay focused on for what makes the difference, and that's easier said than done, because sometimes with strategic plans, there's winners and losers, not necessarily losers, but there's winners, and we have to be very careful with how we do it, because I think big businesses, small businesses, you know, all of that are important for us. But still, is there a way that we make sure that when we do invest, we're investing in the areas that make the most sense for us here in Grand Forks?
That certainly begs the question if we shouldn't have an actual strategic planning session with an, one of those people that helped.
Facilitator.
Thank you, facilitator, and one of those folks, right? A facilitator to help through the process, it certainly couldn't hurt. I, I do know that, you know, traditionally, the mayor sets the strategic plan for, and carrying out the strategic plan for the, for the city, but it should be with input from the city council, and so perhaps we should all have a, Mr. Cavami, do you have any thoughts?
I would just say, I, I would make a motion that we would look at, at, at spending some real time on a strategic plan. I think that the mayor has some great ideas, you look at the state of the city, how do we help, how do we build that, how do we structure it? I think that's the structure that gives us success with whatever that role is. So without a strategic plan, that's almost, we're doomed, you know, if, if we're trying to take it to the next level.
We have one, so there's one item on, without any more comments?
President Sandy, can I just say, I think we've got a decent start, if you look at the, the document that was provided at the start of this for that, and, you know, it's probably, let's call it one to five years, where it would be nice to have one that's even farther, but it's maybe a place to start, so, thanks.
So, related to getting more information on having a, a future employee to help sell the wares of Grand Forks, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Cavami, did you want to make a motion regarding a strategic plan?
I would like to rescind my.
Yeah, you have a motion, very good.
I, I actually have no problem if, for, if you want, I just see no reason why we wouldn't, we couldn't have a eight-person strategic planning session if, if you were interested. Mr. Vean, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, I'm not for sure.
You're right. I'm not for sure, you know, what we can actually, if, if nothing else, if we have a discussion like we had today, it'll be worth it.
Yeah, Mr. Weber?
If we wanted a facilitator who's already delved deeply into all of the most relevant issues here, who knows our community well, I, I think we've got someone in the room that, that could maybe do that work as well.
I'm not qualified, but maybe Mr. Schill could do it.
I was thinking you, but you're right, probably Mr. Schill, yeah.
So, and Council President Sandy, as you recall, Mark's, our Praxis is working on start, kickstarting, I want to say renew the EDC's strategic plan, which is really the, the community's strategic plan, that they should be carrying out on our behalf, so it's a really good time to be engaged on, especially on the economic community development front, because they're going to kick that off, how do we augment what they're doing as part of that plan would maybe be a good strategy?
Yeah, Mr. Weber, the EDC's doing that, the Growth Fund, JDA is doing that, and the city should be considering all of that simultaneously, yeah.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, I'm not, I don't know if we, if we want to, I think we should probably wait with, with everyone else working on their plans, should we wait, or should we try to provide input along the process, or, Mr. Weber?
You suggested that the, the Growth Fund is probably a good place for this to emerge. The Growth Fund is doing its own, and it's monitoring what's happening at the EDC, perhaps the Growth Fund, through the JDA could propose a, a process at some, hopefully soon, future date.
Great, perfect. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Vean?
I don't know, I just wanted to ask.
I'll keep it on. The JDA would look at jobs, but the strategic plan may be more than just jobs. It could be what we're trying to do, what you just talked about for childcare and some of those other things that would be a part of, of the strategic plan, too.
But the strategic planning was suggested that it would be an eight-person body, which is the JDA, so it seems like that's a good place for that to come forward.
Council President Sandy, I think it's a growth strategy, I think we have a jobs, because that's what was the word of the day, it's, I, I hear you as a growth-related strategy, whether that's, and whether that's workforce-related, childcare-related, you know, infill, development-related, it's all growth, smart growth-related.
Any other comments on 2.4? Last but not least, then, 2.5?
Increase of childcare availability, where we are today and what can we do to improve.
Right. Thank you for, to Mr. Schill for providing the 2014 document related to the Grand Forks Region Report and recommendations related to childcare. Unfortunately, I didn't have the chance to review the entire document this afternoon. I think that there, Mr. Weber, if you recall correctly, as you reminded me, I think there was a childcare updated document since then as well, correct, sir?
No, actually, this, this report that was added to the agenda this afternoon is the report that came from the Blue Ribbon Commission on social infrastructure at that time. And as far as I know, this is the most recent report the city has on the state of childcare in the city. And my main proposal tonight would be that we need a quick update on the number of centers, the number of children, the cost of care, and a quick review of the policy change recommendations. The EDC did take a lead role in facilitating the growth of childcare centers through a loan program, and that was so well-received that the Bank of North Dakota added a similar program statewide, but I think that what we need is, is an update of that report, possibly with another, at least a listening session with key stakeholders, because the, the situation has changed since that time. As was noted at the very beginning of all of this, we have ongoing positive trends relating to young families in our community, we need to maintain that and grow that where possible, and this is going to be a key part, part of that. Childcare is, is a tough nut for a community to crack on its own, because you've got this tension between needing to pay childcare workers better, so it's, and make it a more profitable business, which ends up harming the pocketbooks of those young families that need that service, so it's, it's a difficult one for a community to crack, but it's a terribly important issue for us to consider, and I think the best way for us to consider that would be to do some update of the, the report that we received. And I'd, I'd invite Mr. Schill to add any comments or ideas to what I've just said.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weber, I, I can't believe it's been seven years since you did that Blue Ribbon Commission, that's mind-boggling to me where time is going these days. I, I certainly agree.
Maureen has had seven birthdays since then.
You're right. Unbelievable. I certainly will second your sentiment, I think childcare is front and center on the minds of young families in our community, and if we're going to, again, try to attract young talent and retain young talent into our community in those high-paying, good jobs that we're trying to nurture in our community, having childcare, and affordable childcare certainly is, should be a top priority in our community. I don't know what it would take to get the, that document updated, I assume all it takes is money and time. Fortunately, we have, we have little time, and we, I don't know how much money it would take to do that, but probably in terms of, again, cost versus reward, it's probably certainly worth the, the cost that it would take to have the consultants update that document for us. Is that something that city administration could, can move forward administratively, Mr. Feenland?
Yeah, Council President Sandy, we have spending authority up to $50,000, so I think it'll be well within that budget, so we'll, we'll ask Mr. Schill to, we'll get a defined scope and fee and plan to update that with an agreement, move forward, and then as we do, we get the particulars together, we'll come back here to the community the whole or a similar work session to get feedback and direction on how you want to move forward, so, but in the meantime, we'll get, work on all the logistics.
Great. Are there, does anyone else have any thoughts or comments related to the childcare issue in our community today that they want to raise now? Ms. Dockler?
I think you all pretty much covered it, I'd be interested to see that updated information in order to maybe start moving forward a little bit more.
Great.
With actual actions.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Mr. Vean, I see you rapidly writing, did you have thoughts that you wanted to convey?
No, they're just taking notes.
Taking notes, very good. Anything else related to this topic for the good of the order? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Wyville, seconded by Weber, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, for adjourn, thank you.